Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Donna Sivigni, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to the June 10, 2020 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Due to the coronavirus pandemic impacting our county and community, the Board of Education is conducting our meetings in a virtual format until the pandemic abates and the appropriate restrictions that are in place are lifted. Unfortunately, these adjustments will not make it possible for live public participation during the meetings. Citizens may watch the meeting live on Channel 21 or our website, but do not have the opportunity to speak during the meeting. The Board, however, remains very interested in receiving public input on the topics we discuss. Therefore, we encourage public to provide comments to the Board via email. Alternatively, citizens may send written comments to the Board through the U.S. mail. For Board members and staff who are participating in the virtual meeting, I would remind us all to silence our cell phones and other devices around us that microphones may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everyone. And first up, we need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Board members, any comments or questions about the agenda? Not hearing any? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And we will move on to Item 1D, then, the approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes that will take separately. So first, I need a motion for the approval of the unapproved virtual Board Meeting Minutes from May 13, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Okay, Board members, any comments or questions on the May 13 Board Meeting Minutes?
Well, I just have on the last page under our minutes concerning our closed session to indicate that the Board discussed one item under personnel.
Okay. Board members, any other comments? I did actually have one additional one on Page 16. The first new paragraph at the top of Page 16. It says, Ms. Sivigni commented that community members are concerned from the planning and zoning perspective on the... It currently says East Middle Project. That wasn't the subject. It was actually on the Freedom Redistricting Committee. So if we could just make that minor change. That was the only comment that I had on those minutes. Board members, anything else? Okay, so we had those two modifications. And with that, I will call for the vote on the minutes as amended. All those in favor, if I can get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Board members, now we need a motion to approve the unapproved virtual work session minutes of May 13, 2020, FY 2021 operating budget edits.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kyler.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Okay, Board members, any comments or questions on those minutes? Okay, I do have a few. At the very top of Page 2, it says, "Mr. Hartlove reported that with the dollars from the other revenue sources, he felt comfortable increasing the budget by $300,000." I don't think that should say "the budget." I think it should say "increasing the revenue projection by $300,000." And then at the bottom of that same page, it says, "However, the understanding is that these positions are temporary..." Let me read the whole paragraph in context to make sure everyone's in agreement. This says, "The Board was in consensus to keep the six special ed resource teachers and add the onsite technician and the school psychologist using fund balance dollars. However, the understanding is that these positions are temporary and will be evaluated every year for up to three years." I think that we need to insert the phrase, "these two positions are temporary," because the six special ed positions are not temporary. Those are part of the operating budget and are not temporary. Dr. Lockard, do you agree with that edit?
Yes, that is correct. That's good clarification. Thank you.
And then, kind of in the same vein, under next steps, it says, at the end of that first statement, it says, "and fund the temporary positions using fund dollars." I think it should say "to fund the latter using fund balance dollars." Because again, it's kind of talking about the six and the one school psychologist. So I think we're... We just want to make sure that we're funding... That we're talking about funding just the school psychologist position with the fund balance dollars. Board members, any comments on that? Any disagreement with those edits? Or is that consistent with all of our understanding? Okay, great. Board members, any other comments on the minutes? No? Okay, then with that, I will call for the vote on the minutes as amended. All those in favor, can I get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now lastly, we need a motion to approve the unapproved virtual Board Meeting Minutes for May 20, 2020. Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Board members, any comments or revisions? Okay, not hearing any? Then I will call for the vote on the minutes as submitted. All those in favor, can I get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those also pass unanimously. Thank you very much. And now we can move on to Item 1E, the seating of the 46th Student Representative to the Board, Devanshi Misri. And I have a little blurb to read. So, "It is with great pleasure that we, the members of the Board of Education, seat Devanshi Misri as the 46th Student Representative to the Board of Education. Devanshi is a rising junior at Liberty High School, and we look forward to your participation as an advocate and voice of student issues within Carroll County Public Schools. Welcome, Devanshi."
Thank you, Board members and Board President. I am deeply honored to be elected to this position, and I know the past few months have been really hard for our community. But... And I know it will continue to be difficult into the next school year, but I will do my utmost best to fulfill the duty to the students and represent them to my best ability. Thank you.
That is fantastic. And we really do want to welcome you. I wish that we would be able to welcome you in person, but we're looking forward to the time that we will actually be able to do that, and we're very excited to have you.
Thank you.
And can we also acknowledge her parents, who are seated right behind her?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
This is my father, Vijay Misri, and my mother, Rashani Misri.
It's very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Nice to meet you, also.
Okay, excellent. So Board members, anybody else want to make any quick comments?
I'll join in.
I met this young lady at her gifted and talented class at Liberty High School, and I was very impressed just talking to her. So good luck, and we're very happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
So welcome again. Looking forward to working with you, Devanshi.
Hi, as well. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Congratulations and welcome. We're looking forward to working with you. Our student... We're here for students. That's what we're all about. Your voice and your participation with us is so important. So really happy to have you with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, so then we will move on to the public participation section. And Dr. Lockard, I do know that we did receive at least one set of comments that will be read under public participation tonight.
Those comments have been posted to the website. What we've typically done, Board members, is we've posted public comments for Board Meetings to the website. During public hearings, we've read public hearing. We did receive a public comment from Mr. Charlie Ferguson as it relates to conversation around curriculum, multicultural representation in curriculum materials. It was a very thoughtful and, like I said, thoughtful and important conversation, email. A lot of work's been started, a lot of work to do in our system. We appreciated that. And that has been posted to our website under the public comment section for this meeting.
If I could just mention, to my knowledge, I know that there have been two petitions that have been started by CCPS alumni and students addressing both the recent tragedy and further change that they would like to see in the schools.
Thank you, Devanshi. Yes, some very important conversations to be had. A lot of important work happening in our system, but a lot... A long way to go. And so I look forward to engaging our community, certainly the perspective of our students, like you, our recently former students, and, like I said, the community at large. So we appreciate that and appreciate that advocacy.
Okay, then with that, we will move on to Section 3, Board Member and Superintendent Updates. So Board members, for your activities and correspondence, does someone want to go first?
I'll go ahead and go. Why not? So with everything that happened with graduations, and unfortunately, us as Board members were not permitted to attend, you know, given the restrictions, some local communities had parades. And so I was invited to attend Manchester Valley's Francis Scott Keyes and South Carol's community parades that they had for their seniors, and it was incredible. The parents that put it together with the municipalities' help and the local law enforcement and the fire departments that were involved as well, that was very well done. I honestly see a new tradition in Carroll County with the local communities doing something for our seniors. So it was a very wonderful experience to see them all. They really all seemed to enjoy it. You know, we... It was something that, if you saw it, you felt it. And it was just really great to see. Of course, tomorrow's our last day. So, you know, I just want to again congratulate all of our seniors for everything. You know, it was not very easy for them, but, you know, they... From what I'm hearing, some from families are very happy with what they saw and what they experienced with the intimate graduation ceremony. And for all our kids moving forward, you know... And that's another thing. A lot of other communities have been doing parades, whether it's the PTA, the PTO, and they're getting the staff together. Tomorrow, Manchester Elementary is doing one. North Carroll Middle did one last month. So it's nice to see that the local community is doing things for their students to, you know, kind of say hi and we miss you, and they can't wait to see them next year.
Thanks, Ms. Pataglia. Ms. Herbert, should I go next?
Sure. Well, tomorrow will be my last day of school, teaching my grandchildren, and that will be a happy day, and I'm sure for others. And all in all, it taught patience and new ideas. I never thought I would ever be doing anything virtual with education. And I want to congratulate the 2020 graduates. I'm so sorry we never heard anything back from the state. And Donna and I had an election, so we missed... I couldn't go to Manchester Valley's parade. And Mr. Kyler reminded me today that if I was teaching, I would have to let the air out of the ball. So that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Herbert. Okay, Mr. Kyler, it sounded like you wanted to go next?
Yeah, that suits. We did have one May legislative meeting. And of course, there was a primary election, and I voted and got to see a couple candidates there. Last Saturday, I was asked if I would come support one of the Maryland Open, I guess, protest event, Saturday morning in Westminster. And when I got there, one of the organizers actually asked me if I could say a few words, and I made it very plain. I was not speaking as a Board of Ed member. I was speaking as Kenny Kyler, but I did. And that was a great day and nice to see. Everybody's anxious to get going. And as we all know, our governor's talking right now. He's opened a bunch of things evidently. My little tech stuff's going crazy, and I think he opened gyms 50%. But at any rate, because I was at the event, more as importantly, Katie Lynn Stab, who's an Associate Professor of Biology at McDaniel, sent me an email and copied the local newspaper and asked why, if I was there, I couldn't also attend the Black Student Lives Matter protests going on. And she also told me they probably had bigger numbers than we did, which she was correct. So Monday night, I got to go there. And it was really neat to see very peaceful protests with signs lining Main Street in front of the library, a lot of people blowing horns and waving and supporting them. I talked to two younger students who held signs and posed for me, and we talked a little bit, and it was really nice. Again, on us trying to get things open, one of the things... I did a walk around while I was there, and it's depressing to walk past the Boys and Girls Club and see all the lights out with kids running around the streets and needing a place to go. So we need to get schools open, but we need to get a lot of those places open, too. So hopefully, as we're speaking, the governor's opening up some stuff, and we much appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Kyler. Dr. Dorsey?
Okay, I had the opportunity to be with a family member, my great nephew, Brandon Morrison, who was a senior at Century High School. I was with the family as they entered and then exited the school for his walk across the stage to get his diploma. So when Brandon and his family members exited the building, they shared how impressed they were with the setup from the beginning to the end. It was very organized. There were opportunities for several photo shoots. And they could really feel that the administration and staff really did try to make the event special for our seniors. And as I waited for Brandon to exit, I saw other graduates entering, and everybody just seemed to be in a very positive mood. And I think they made the best out of the situation. So I thank the planning committees and Mrs. McCabe and Mr. King and all of the high school administrators and staff for celebrating the accomplishments of the Class of 2020. As it's been said, we're sorry we couldn't have done it in the more traditional way, but we made the best, I think, of our situation. I also attended the Parade of Seniors from South Carroll High School as they rode from Winfield to South Carroll. And again, another very, very proud moment because the seniors were atop cars and they were from sunroofs, just parading by and being congratulated and cheered. So again, congratulations to all of our members of the Class of 2020. I continue to be inspired by the motivational Monday messages that are sent from Judy Jones, who was our Equity and Inclusion Officer. And I give her a special thanks, she and her staff, for facilitating the courageous conversation sessions this week. And I thank all staff who were able to participate. There were four sessions, and by the time I read about them and tried to go on, all of the sessions were already bought. And I understand that they evidently filled quickly. So that was very, very encouraging. And I hope that the members of the staff who participated in that gleaned some helpful information. I'm hopeful that a number of staff will be able to participate in the book study this summer to continue conversations about race. Truly, the time is now for our system to support each student while displaying differentiated compassion and realizing that this time is really being experienced differently for students and staff. During this time in our country, there's a lot of racial tension and unrest. So it behooves us to really engage in courageous conversations about race and to examine and plan for preparing our students so that they can be productive members in a diverse society. I thank our former students who are advocating for a diverse curriculum and a deeper understanding of race relations. And, you know, it's not the first time just recently that we've been hearing from alumni of Carroll County Public Schools. We've been hearing in the past that, you know, once they go away and experience a more diverse environment, they feel that they've really lacked something here in Carroll County. So I think now is the time for us to really get serious about making sure that we are diversifying the curriculum and improving a deeper understanding of race relations. So I thank you, Dr. Lockard, for sharing a response with the students who've been in touch with you and for taking the time to really present a way forward for our school system. In fact, you shared a number of initiatives that we're involved in, and I think they're all going to be worthwhile. Again, I think the theme that I'd like to just continue planting here is that the time is now. I mean, we've been hearing, we've been listening to student voices. We've got to act. The time is now. So again, we've got to move forward. So those have been my involvements for the month since our last meeting. And even though I did not participate in one of the protests or any of the protests, I did have some drive-bys and supported the ones who had taken the time to come out and share their vision for our land. So thank you. That's it for this month.
Nice message, Pat.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey. That was... And Devanshi, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we always give our student rep a chance to talk about their correspondence for the past month as well. So I wanted to offer you that opportunity.
So over the past month, I've just been getting ready for this position and trying to prep myself the best I can. In light of recent protests and all, I have heard from several students who say that they want to see more change in our school environment and school climate. And they just want a safe and secure environment where all our students feel included. So I think moving forward on that is the best goal for now.
Great, thank you. And just a couple of quick things on my end. I know we've already talked about graduations and what a great effort that our administrators and our parents and local officials... And it was such a collaborative effort by all to really try to make an unconventional approach, something special this year for our graduating seniors. You know, we were a little bit disappointed that we weren't able to, you know, get a response from the state in trying to do something a little bit different. You know, working with... I did have many discussions with our delegates and trying to push that agenda item and the letter that we had submitted from legal. It was a little bit disappointing that we didn't really get a solid response from the state. But I'm just so happy that we've been getting lots of emails and messages from students and parents saying how wonderful of a job that folks did, really trying to make this a special occasion for our students. So I'm really glad to see that and happy to hear such positive responses about the parades and all the things that were done within each one of the individual high schools. And I think you might be right, Ms. Pataglia. We may have some new traditions because some creativity and some fun things that came out of this might actually live on into the future, even when we are back to quote-unquote "normal." So glad to report on that. We did actually have a Teachers Advisory Council meeting as well about a week and a half ago. And you probably saw that in the minutes of the board groups that are providing their meeting minutes, the board-appointed committees. There were some minutes in there from the Teachers Advisory Council from the meeting that we had about two weeks ago now. And so it was kind of a lessons-learned discussion, right? What were the things that we did well? What were the things that we still had challenges with? And just some good conversations there, and I was really glad to be part of that discussion as well. And just from a last-day-of-school perspective, I really appreciate all of the students and all of the teachers and all of the administrators pushing through to the end of the year. I know I could see it with my own kids. You know, the first couple of weeks and the first couple of months, you know, went pretty well, and there was definitely some momentum behind all of it. But the last couple of weeks started petering out, right? It really was a struggle. So I appreciate, you know, even with my own kids, trying to get them like, okay, what do you have to do these last couple of days? We got to make sure that we get that in there. So I really do appreciate all the effort on the parts of teachers, administrators, everyone, just pushing through to the end. So, you know, with tomorrow being the last day of school, I just want to thank everyone for their efforts this year in very challenging times. And we'll be having some very important discussions on June 24 as well, you know, updates for what our plans are, what we're going to be trying to do for September. So looking forward to those. And with that, we can move on to Section 5. We don't actually have any presentations under Section 4 this time, so we can move on directly to Section 5 with reports. And the first one up is the construction... The superintendent has a report. Oh, Dr. Lockard, I am so sorry. You're trying to brace onto it, and you have some very important things to say. Please, go right ahead.
That's very... Well, thank you. First, I'd like to echo some of the comments we've heard tonight. And, you know, Devanshi, I said earlier about how important our student voice is, and you referenced that in your comments. And this is a time for us to make sure that we are absolutely listening. And so we've talked a little bit about this, the importance of those courageous conversations. Dr. Dorsey referenced some of that work that was undergoing this year, or today. Lots of work this year as it relates to student voice, as it relates to curriculum evaluation and audits and making sure that, you know, we... Our students can see themselves represented in the curriculum and the things that are taught, as well as opportunities for those conversations to happen, community and family engagement. All of those pieces are important. And, you know, I can say to you that we've begun a lot of that work, but we have a lot of work ahead of us. And so I'm so appreciative of the feedback we've received and that we want to listen and we want to learn and we want to grow and continue to get better and better. And so I just wanted to echo some of those comments that we heard earlier tonight and appreciate that. I got a couple of good news items to report here about students in the system. FDLA State Leadership Conference. We had high school students who participated in the Maryland Future Business Leaders of America State Leadership Conference. Students from our high schools competed in events testing their business knowledge and skills against more than 1,000 students in chapters... skills against more than 1,000 students in chapters from 50 Maryland high schools. And they brought home nine first place and one second place and seven third-place awards. So congratulations. Individual and team events focused on skill, use, and leadership and career development, and chapter events recognized overall achievement and performance in chapter management and growth. And those top state winners are eligible to compete for national awards at the National Leadership Conference coming up. I'd also like to congratulate Sarah Forster. She's a rising senior at Manchester Valley High School. Sarah was elected as the Future Business Leaders of America Region One Vice President for the state of Maryland. She went through an extensive selection process and a campaign to achieve this post, which includes all chapters in Allegheny, Garrett, Frederick, Washington, and Carroll Counties. In addition to leading those counties, Sarah will participate in an educational leadership program that will pair her to be a future business leader. The Manchester Valley Future Business Leaders of America Chapter will have the honor of hosting the regional competition for the 2021 school year. So congratulations to Sarah. Also want to say congratulations to Steven Zabignawich. I got that right, Steven. He's a rising junior at Westminster High School, and Steven was selected as the Maryland Youth of the Year by the Boys and Girls Club of America. He is the first teen boy from the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster to receive this state title. And this prestigious honor is given to an exemplary young person in recognition of leadership service, academic excellence, and dedication to live a healthy lifestyle. Steven will serve as an ambassador for all teens in the state. He's going to receive a $2,500 college scholarship from Boys and Girls Club of America, and will also go on to contend for the Regional Youth of the Year. Steven plans to attend the Carroll County Career and Technology Center next year and studying automotive technology. He focuses his community service efforts on supporting youth programs, raising money for the Carroll County Humane Society to promote animal adoption, and is a longtime member of the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster. He's actively involved in numerous health, wellness, and leadership activities. He currently serves as the club's sport and recreation intern and participates in the Leaders in Training Junior Staff Program. Steven is a busy guy. As a junior leader, he mentors young club members and even helps plan events. So, well-deserved, Steven. Happy for you for that recognition. And finally, Sarah Watcher. She's a fifth-grade humanities teacher at Elmer Wolf Elementary School. She recently received the Joan Devlin Coley Award for Excellence in Education during the McDaniel Class of 2020 Celebration Day. This is an award that's presented to a graduate student with the best record in the study of literacy theory and practice, and Sarah earned her master's degree as a reading specialist in literacy leadership from McDaniel. Sarah was a student growing up in Carroll County Public Schools, graduated from McDaniel with a bachelor's degree in English and elementary education, and was president of McDaniel's chapter of Kappa Delta Pi, that's the Educational Honor Society. And she's taught at Elmer Wolf since 2015. So congratulations to Sarah. I'd also like to extend my most sincere congratulations to our seniors. We're just about through all of the modified graduations. We're so appreciative of everyone's flexibility, and we want to thank our, obviously, our seniors for all their work in Carroll County Public Schools over the years, their families, all the love and support. Of course, our high school, over their past four years, their teachers, their principals, and for those folks who were involved in helping to put together what I think turned out to be, if we couldn't have our regular, you know, traditional ceremonies, a pretty special ceremony, at least in the modified version. So we thank everybody for that. To all of our students, tomorrow's your last day of school. We want everybody to have a safe and happy summer. We want you to get outside and enjoy yourselves. Be safe and be well. Everybody, we know there are a lot of questions about the fall and returning to school. I'm anxious to hear what the governor had to say while we were broadcasting here today. We do have teams unpacking all those considerations. We are soliciting stakeholder feedback. We are having several meetings. Somebody, one of the board members referenced, I think it was Ms. Zabignaw, referenced our next June meeting, where we'll start to have all these discussions. We want, more than anything, to have folks back in school in the quickest way possible, but also the safest way possible. And that's what's most important. And so June 24th is that update meeting. We'll be providing updates throughout the summer, so we will continue to communicate throughout. So with that, I conclude my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lockard. So now we can move on to Section 5 for reports, with the first item up being the construction report. So, Dr. Lockard, I'll hand that back over to you to tee it up.
Thank you. Let me grab my notes here. All right, the construction report. This is our monthly construction report. The larger construction items, Career and Tech and East Middle, will be addressed separately on the agenda this evening, so we will get to those. But other than that, we'll get to. There aren't any other major changes on this report. They're there for your review as part of the agenda packet, and staff are here for any questions you may have.
Okay, and board members, I would ask that we keep any of the questions on Career and Tech and... or the bigger projects, that we keep those too, the later discussion items that we have tonight. But do you have any questions about any of the other items that are on this school construction report? No? And, Dr. Lockard, I know Mr. Marx is probably on the feed somewhere. Just wanted to validate that, you know, we're still on schedule for all of these summer projects despite the current situation. I mean, all of these summer projects are going to go off as originally planned, correct?
Correct. We're looking good. We have a couple of permit items that we're reviewing with the county right now to iron out a few changes and corrections, but we're looking good.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Marx.
No problem.
Okay, so if there are no other comments or questions, then we can move on to Item 5B, which is the Annual Report for the Carroll County Career and Technology Advisory Council. And, Dr. Lockard, maybe we'll tee these all up as we have the annual reports for all... is it? It's six, right? One, two, three, four, five, six...
Right.
...board-appointed committees. And so we'll go through them very quickly, I guess, each individually, but I know that, you know, we had planned on delivering some of these reports in a very different fashion this year. Unfortunately, with the current situation, we weren't really able to do that. Originally, we had planned on bringing in a representative from each one of these councils, right, and giving the annual report and having some good face-to-face dialogue with the board. Obviously, that couldn't really happen this year. But do you want to have some opening comments, Dr. Lockard, about each one of these six reports that we're about to go through?
Sure. And basically, you surmised what I was going to say. Typically, at the June board meeting, based on our policy and regs, we bring you these annual reports from your appointed advisory councils. And we had discussed having the reports as a series of work sessions, in-person work sessions, where we could bring members of the advisory councils in, where we could do a little bit of in-person Q and A. I would like to do that still next year, but for this year, we have the council reports in sort of the traditional format. They've been reviewed by each council and submitted to the staff liaison from each council, and those staff liaisons are here to answer any questions. So we can... Certainly, we have Nick Shakni around in the call here for the... We can start with the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee report. I'm sorry, start with the technology, that's the first one, 5B, the Technology Advisory Council, and that is Bill Echols.
So, Bill, did you have any comments that you wanted to make about the annual report?
We had an interesting spring, of course, with all of the closings and the opportunities to work through. So one of the things that we were required to do this spring was our local needs assessment, and we, of course, ended up having to do that virtually. So we're still planning to have a follow-up meeting towards the end of the month, probably still virtually, but to wrap up those events. So our calendar has stretched out a little longer than it would have normally, but we are still working with our industry partners and trying to make sure that we have those good connections with the school system.
Now, board members, did you have any questions for Bill regarding the report? Or Kenny and Tyra, did you have any comments that you wanted to make, being the board representatives that were on this group?
Not really. I mean, we miss getting together. Like everybody, we wish we could have done and talked more because the committee meetings are good, but I'm sure Bill will agree, we're much more excited about some stuff later in the agenda.
Right.
Definitely.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bill. Okay, so, Dr. Lockard, I guess we'll move on to the next annual report, which is for the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee?
Yes, now Nick is here. Hi, Nick.
Good evening, Dr. Lockard. Good evening, board members. It was a busy but productive year for our Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. We were able to have three of our scheduled meetings. Our fourth meeting was impacted by the closures related to COVID. But it was a very productive year. It was an all-parent-led executive board, which is something that we strive for every year. We had lots of professional learning opportunities for our staff and learning opportunities for our families throughout our CAC meetings. We had scheduled time in each agenda for advisory. And in addition to CAC, we work... CAC works closely with our Family Support Network on providing learning opportunities along with our Family Support Center. So lots of opportunities for our families to get and access resources and information related to special education and beyond. We'll work with any family that's interested in anything that we have to offer. But it was, all in all, it was a good year for us. We didn't get a chance to wrap up a few things, but we have a plan for that. We were in the process of working and revising our bylaws and then our elections. But we've got plans for finishing both up over the summer at the beginning of next school year.
Donna, I would like to say I'm a member of that committee, and that is a very hard-working group of individuals, caring, concerned, and they have had absolutely wonderful people come and speak to them at those meetings, and it's been very informative and it's been very helpful to all the parents involved. And I can't thank them enough, and they asked me to be back on it next year, and I certainly will be. But that is a very hard-working group, and I thank them for everything they do. And Nick.
Thank you for that, Ms. Herbert. And Nick, I really appreciate the comments, and I know that there's been a lot of discussion over the last year with regards to the special education resource teachers that we've been talking about in connection with the staffing plan and a lot of work that was done around the staffing plan and trying to make sure that we got the budgetary resources for that. Does this group have a lot of input into those discussions?
Most definitely. This is one of our conduits for information for anything related to special education, from staffing to services and supports or just needs that are emerging out there. But most definitely, this was a kind of for soliciting feedback from our families on where we need our supports. And this is a group that I work with annually on the Special Education Staffing Plan to be able to gather their insight as to where they feel, you know, we should allocate resources. So it's a group that I work closely with, especially the executive board. If I have an idea, I will often run it by them to get their feedback throughout the course of the year, as well as the general membership.
Okay. I would really be interested in hearing next year, you know, what their reactions are too. I mean, so you've made some significant changes to the staffing plan, and we do have the funding now for those six additional special ed resource teachers. I would really like to get the feedback from this group as to how they think that that's working and the impact that it's having from the parent perspective.
Most definitely.
And Donna, the other thing that I see is that the conversation alone is informative. And as I said before, I never, ever dreamed about people having difficulty finding the correct babysitter. And these families, some of them may only be able to go out and eat dinner once a month. And they're very caring and compassionate, and they try to help each other out with their family needs. And that is just such a big plus for that group.
Right. And I did notice that you didn't necessarily get to spend the full $2,500 that's allotted to this group this year, correct? So...
We will have spent down by our deadline for all those funds.
Okay.
We use them all. Don't worry.
Gotcha. Just want to make sure that they're all used in an effective way.
Most definitely. We often... The unique thing this year, we had budgeted for some speakers. We thought there would be a cost, but we were able to arrange most of our speakers at little or no cost, which was a benefit. So we just needed to ship some funds towards the end, but we'll make use of all of the funding.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shakni.
Okay, so if we want to move on to the Community Advisory Council, Dr. Lockard, did you have some comments about that?
Yes, very important... Well, all these advisory councils are really important. Ms. Gaddis leads a very important community advisory council, and she's here to give us a few brief highlights.
Good evening, board members. The Community Advisory Council was only able to meet three times this year, but we had three very productive meetings with some excellent speakers and some excellent conversation on current topics taking place within the school system. I guess the thing that we are most proud of is the fact that we really placed an effort on getting more participation, and we were able to not only meet but exceed our goal this year with participation, and we hope to increase participation even more this coming year.
Great. And that is actually one of the items in the strategic plan...
Yes, it is.
...which, you know, we were able to... Dr. Lockard and I were able to meet with that group at the first meeting of the year to stress the importance of the group and how that is one of the items in the strategic plan that we're really trying to move forward for community participation. So thank you for all your efforts on that front, Ms. Gaddis.
I think having you there and having Dr. Lockard there at the beginning of the year really set the tone for the rest of the year and stressed the importance of the group and helped us to get the participation that we really need.
Great. And I don't want to lose sight of, you know, probably about a year ago now, we had taken a vote to make sure that by the end of the board meeting that we had identified any topics that we wanted to send to the CAC on a regular basis. And I think with the current situation, we haven't necessarily been quite as diligent about that these last couple of months, and I want to make sure that we pick that back up as part of future board meetings to make sure that we don't lose sight of the importance of that group and the feedback that they can provide.
I think that would be very helpful for us.
Okay, great. And Ms. Pataglia, did you have... You're the board representative on that group. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make? Oh, I think you're on mute.
There we go. I wanted to say that I was just before coming on the board, and I had attended a couple just to observe. How much the attendance has grown is incredible, and I'm really happy to see that. I'm happy to see the parents engaged, you know, getting the feedback and hearing from the parents things that are happening within their community, and I think that's amazing to bring to the table because you want other communities to be involved, whether it's a PTA restaurant night or they're having a musical. Just having that information that's shared around the boardroom when we're there is really important, and I'm just... I was glad to see that it's grown. And, you know, Ms. Gaddis has been doing a wonderful job with that, so I'm just really happy with how much it's progressed. I can't wait till next year.
So, Ms. Gaddis, I know that the CAC doesn't typically meet over the summer. Their first meeting is usually in the September, late September, early October timeframe, is that right?
Yes. We are engaging them this summer, though, to use them as one of our stakeholders to get feedback from as we plan for the new school year. So we may possibly be meeting this summer.
Okay, that's excellent to hear. I was going to ask if there was a way that we could engage this group in order to get that exact feedback, because I think that's going to be a big piece as we're planning for September. I want to make sure that we hear the voices of this particular group. of this particular group as we're doing that planning.
I foresee that we'll probably have a few meetings this summer because there will be an awful lot to talk about and a lot of feedback to get from that group.
Right. Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that those discussions are already in play. All right, board members, any other questions or comments for the CAC? No? All right, then we can move on to the next one, the Carroll County Curriculum Council. Dr. Lockard, did you have some opening comments for that?
Again, here's a place, another place where a lot of really important work happens. Ms. McCoslin's on with us as well as Mr. Anderson, but I'll turn things over to Ms. McCoslin.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Lockard. Our goal this year for Curriculum Council was really to change things up. In the past, our meetings have been more of presentation style with input from members of the council. This year, we decided to immerse members of the council into the actual student learning experience.
Getting a little bit of feedback. So, board members, if I can ask everyone for the moment who is not Ms. McCoslin, if we can mute our microphones just to make sure we don't get some feedback.
We were, thank you. We were able to hold two of our four scheduled meetings. The first one at the Career and Technology Center, where members were able to explore different programs, get information regarding new programs that the Career and Technology Education Department is adopting at schools, and then also get to talk to students about their experience at the tech center. The second one was at Carroll Community College, and we were able to tour different labs and experiences that Carroll Community College offers our students, and also talk about the Dual Enrollment Program and our Advanced Tech Dynamics Program. The third meeting that was scheduled was for March 3rd, Friday, March 13th, which we all know what that day was. So we ended up canceling that meeting. I emailed members of the council the textbook lists and information, collected feedback from those, and also are planning to make some time this summer for those who wanted to review certain materials to be able to do so.
Thank you, Ms. McCoslin. And Dr. Dorsey, you are the representative on the Curriculum Council. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And it's been a wonderful opportunity to serve on the Curriculum Council, and I really appreciate the way that Ms. McCoslin has set it up. Again, we're not just as a committee sitting and taking notes, receiving information, but as she shared, she's pretty much immersing us in the actual experiences that the students would be having. And I know that's very much appreciated. I'm very sorry that we could not attend that Friday, the 13th, meeting because you have a good process to be followed, you know, as we review materials. So I did not have the chance to review any of them. And, you know, I appreciate that we're going to be coming back and taking a look at some of the items that are on the list so that we can have the opportunity to go through those. But again, it's a great committee and a committee that has a wide participation as far as parents and staff members. And again, I think this committee can do a lot to chart our course forward with the curriculum and some additions that we might have.
Yes.
I had a question real quick. When do you send out sign-ups for parents to petition, to, sorry, to hopefully try to become members of the council? Is it every year? Is it two years?
No, so every year. So, yes, so typically principals at the schools will reach out to their parents and select parents and student representatives from their school to sit on the council. But certainly anyone who would like to join, I can, you can contact me, Tara, and we can take care of that.
Wonderful. Because I did have a parent reach out to me, and I said, well, this is who you need to contact. So hopefully she emailed you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Ms. McCoslin, I was really happy to see that, you know, we didn't try to race or circumvent the process at all at the end of the year, right, with a lot of the members, not a lot of members who wanted to review the curriculum but didn't get a chance to do it, given the current situation, that, you know, we didn't try to race through that. We're going to still continue to do the due diligence, and you're giving everyone who wanted to view them the opportunity to do that. Do we have a timeframe that we're looking to complete that additional curriculum materials review?
I'm thinking by September or October.
Okay.
Depending on, you know, when we can come back and those kinds of things. But we have had several members who were able to pick up some materials to review. So we're still working through that process, even though, you know, we've been in this situation.
Okay. And does that impact the beginning of the year? Are those materials that you would want to have in circulation by the beginning of the year? Or is, if they're not approved until September, October timeframe, does that impact?
So I contacted each curriculum supervisor and asked them what must-have books do they need to start next school year. And the ones that you'll see tonight on the list are the must-haves to start the school year. The others are resource books and other texts that could wait till a little bit later to purchase.
Okay, okay, excellent. Okay, board members, any other questions or comments for Ms. McCoslin? Okay, thank you so much, Angie.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we can move on to the Carroll County Security Advisory Council. And, Dr. Lockard, some opening comments?
Sure. And before I turn things over to Mr. Williams, I want to thank Sheriff Dewey, who's on the call this evening, for his ongoing support and partnership with Carroll County Public Schools. Deputy Hart served as the chair this year for the Security Advisory Council. And so Sheriff Dewey was really appreciative of that partnership and support in this important council.
Yeah. Steve, thanks for giving me a couple of minutes to speak. And I know part of the security initiative we'll discuss a little bit later on in the meeting. But, you know, the SRO program is a small portion of what takes place within security. There's an awful lot more that goes on. And I, too, have participated in a number of these parades, and we're actually scheduling one right now for Westminster, Winter's Mill. So security really never ends for us when it comes to student population. I have a senior at Manchester Valley High. I want to thank Joe Guerrero and his staff for putting on, I think, what couldn't have gone any better under the circumstances, a graduation. And then Career and Tech, Betsy Donovan and the folks down there did just an absolute wonderful job. But I think I'd be a little remiss if I didn't address what's going on in our world today. And so if you give me a couple of seconds to make a quick statement, I would just tell you that despite all of our efforts to put the right people in the right jobs at times, at the end of the day, we're dealing with human beings, and we can't see into their hearts or their minds. And what happened to George Floyd is awful, disgusting, and I don't think anyone could argue that justice shouldn't be sought in the fullest extent of the law. But I will tell you that my deputies weren't there, and nor was anyone from law enforcement in this county. Vilifying every police officer is wrong, and it's extremely counterproductive to the discussion or change. I'm proud to be a police officer. I think you all know that. I'm proud of the men and women that serve alongside of me in my office now and my former agency, the Maryland State Police, and all the police officers in this county. They are truly some of the finest people I know. Now, my brother's a good cop. My nephew's a good cop. My father-in-law's a retired West Virginia State Trooper, and I'd be proud if one of my children chose to follow in their footsteps. If you want to know how we're doing in our schools with our SRO program, go to my Facebook page and look at our SRO Spotlight. You'll see the hundreds, if not thousands, of comments from parents, teachers, staff, alumni of the schools praising the work that my deputies do. I think that folks around us and other agencies would be wise to look at us on how policing should be done in a community. And I think the public school system, that me and you, Dr. Lockard, would be wise to leverage the outstanding relationship that our two agencies have to further the conversation for change. So I know I took up a couple of minutes. I appreciate the time, and I know we have some stuff to talk about a little bit later on, but I think it was an important message that needed...
Can I just add a comment or two concerning that, you know, certainly we thank you for your service to our county, and you make a great statement. I mean, we just can't take a broad brush and paint all policemen as operating under the same way or under the same fashion. But we do have to keep in mind that, again, race plays into this. And, again, I mean, I was outside with my grandson last year, one day in the summer. We were outside, and the siren went off, and we could hear the siren going through the street, another street. And he's like, oh, come on, come on, we've got to go in. And I'm like, well, why do we have to go in? And, you know, his perception of why we had to go in, it just blew me away. And again, and it's just not coming from him, but I know that, you know, there are others who have that same sentiment. So again, I guess one question is how diversified is our staff here in the county? And, you know, do you all have any steps in place as far as your human relations with the community are concerned? And again, I don't want to monopolize what we're here to talk about with these questions, but since you brought this up, you know, I would like to have those coupled up if I could.
Yeah, I know. I open myself up to making these comments. And I, you know, you need only look in the school system and see the diversity that I have within my, you know, deputy program within the SROs. And, you know, it's funny you say that because during the height of this and as this started in Minneapolis, I got an email from a couple in Elderford. And, you know, it was an open letter to me through Facebook, and I usually get back to people rather quickly if they send me something directly. And it was a young white couple from Eldersburg that had adopted two small children from Africa. And they wanted to know what I would tell them as their children are getting older and dealing with law enforcement, and how to handle themselves on a traffic stop, or what should take place, and what their expectations were of law enforcement in their community. And I sat back and thought about it for a while, and I thought to myself, you know, myself and that couple have a lot in common because for the better part of 18 years, I've had to explain to my children, as I put on a uniform and I left each and every day, that I may not come back protecting the rights of those individuals. And I think you know me, and I think the people that sit on this board know me, that I will simply not tolerate that at all at any part of my organization. I think we're good community servants, and we do a wonderful job in this organization communicating with all walks of life, and we're very welcoming. And I think that I've seen that as I've navigated through these protests also. Kenny, I saw you on Saturday, and I saw a wonderful group from Black Lives Matter that couldn't have been any nicer to me. And I have not seen the vilification of law enforcement in this county. I've seen good conversation. And I think that I would tell your grandson, that's where it starts, because I invited that couple to come up to my office and talk with me and my deputies and look at the equipment and build a relationship of trust from the word "go." And I think that's where the conversation starts, not only in our public schools, but as soon as we can start communicating with them. I certainly don't want that in this county, and I'll stand to make sure that it doesn't happen. I hope I answered your question, Patton. You can certainly...
You did, and I certainly appreciate your taking the time to respond. And again, I do appreciate you and what you're able to offer to the community.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Sheriff Dewey, I just wanted to take the time and thank you and all of our SROs for everything that they do in our communities. I hear lots of positivity. I have never heard anything negative regarding our SROs. And I know there are some counties that are reevaluating that program, and I hope that's something we never have to do, because I really do like seeing the community support that our SROs have. And, excuse me, if there's something that's going on on social media, you know, it's notified through the schools, our SROs are on it. You know, if there's, you know, anything that's happening, our SROs are helping out in the communities, and we have that wonderful connection. And I just can't thank you and the deputies enough for everything that you're doing here in Carroll County.
Yeah, Tara, if you guys go to the Facebook page that I was telling you about, I think it's between Shanita Blackwell and Demont Harvey that would be the two most popular SROs, either Trentry or Winter's Mill. And they seem to have a driving force at those schools and have really assimilated and become part of the family. But make no mistake, those two deputies and every one of them in those schools would put their life on the line for any child that's confronted with harm. And that's ultimately their purpose is to make sure that there's a safe environment for them at the end of the day, and to be a resource and to continue the conversation. They're great resources. It's a great diverse resource that we have within the public school system. So I'm sorry, Doc, if I took up a lot of time, but...
Now, Sheriff Dewey, I want to thank you for being here tonight and for having those conversations, and Dr. Dorsey for speaking up as well. These are important conversations to be had, and I appreciate everyone's time and effort this evening to start those dialogues. And we just need to make sure that they continue.
Absolutely. And you guys will see me in a little bit, I think?
Yes. To tell you, there's an item under the award of bids that I'm sure you will be front and center in that conversation.
All right. I'll check you guys later.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. And we're almost to that. But Mr. Williams, I wanted to make sure you had a chance to just highlight the work of the Security Advisory Council.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Lockard. Good evening, board members. I think it would probably be just fair to say that the last conversation, I don't want that to be overshadowed by the nature of this report by any means or the content of the report. Not that it would, but in the fact that I think that the more important conversation was just had. That being said, we do have an incredible relationship with the sheriff's office, with Major Hart, who is the chair of our Security Advisory Council, Dave Stem, the commander over there under Rich Hart, Lieutenant Mark, the board. And I do believe that the Safe Schools Unit is a great place where these relationships and these discussions can occur that you were talking about. And so I would be remiss if I didn't mention that. Just in the interest of time, I'll just say that we meet quarterly with the Security Advisory Council. Due to the COVID epidemic or pandemic, we were only able to meet three times. That being said, we were able to accomplish the charges that were provided to us with prioritizing the use of CIP funds, training and exercises, and communications. And you'll hear more about the communications tonight. You'll see in the report that there are some additional recommendations for the charge for next year. Obviously, the board is not tied to those. They are just the recommendations from the council to them on what we see as needs. And you'll see some accountability in that, continuing with training. And I think one of the other things that ties into the conversation that was just had is the parent-student outreach. We still need to work on that from the security side, and I believe that it might be a great opportunity to engage the SROs and the students in that piece of the charge that might be given to the board. So with that, I would take any questions.
Dwayne, I would like to bring something up because I am on that committee. I think we've missed a part of our security. And I think when we look at this, we talk about school safety when we walk in and on the grounds and all that. But I think we need to add a bus contractor, because they are getting our students to and from school. And I, you know, I think we should bring that up.
That, I would say that that would be the board's prerogative. This is the board's, one of the board's councils, so they decide the composition of each of the councils. So that would be up to you all to bring that change to the table.
Right. And Dr. Lockard, that is something that we approve. Is that in the August timeframe that we approve the composition of each one of these committees?
Yes, it is. So that's a very easy add to make in August.
Thank you. And I will be bringing that up. Thank you, Donna and Dr. Lockard. I'll be bringing that up.
Okay. Okay. And Marshall, like you said, you do serve on this board. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make about?
No, it's very informative and we have our meetings and when you leave, you're quiet, you don't talk about them. But it's amazing how much work Duane does and how he gets things accomplished. It's amazing. I don't know how he gets it all done. And I'm sure he will appreciate getting someone else to help him because there aren't enough hours in the day. I don't know how he does it. So, but it's a great group and he's hired good people to be around him to do certain things and like check the doors and making sure they're all locked and all, just, but he's got a lot on his plate. And thank you, Duane, and you definitely need help.
Thank you.
And I won't share the comment I had earlier, but I'm glad to see that help is on the way, Duane.
Thank you.
Right, the Department of One is finally going to get some help.
Okay, thanks, Duane. Last up, board members, is the Teacher Advisory Council. I know they just actually met maybe last week or week and a half ago. Mr. Anderson. Who may be on mute or maybe not on the call anymore.
There I am.
Oh, there he is.
Dr. Lockard, I'm glad I could bring some humor to this. So I wanted to thank the board members, specifically President Savigny and Dr. Dorsey, our alternate, that serve on the teacher advisory. Thank you guys so very much. I also would like to thank Alexis Bush, who was our co-chair. Alexis is a kindergarten teacher in our school system, who's an amazing professional, and I just wanted to go ahead and acknowledge her. I'd like to go ahead and share that we met twice this year as we were planned to meet. In the fall, we spent significant time, believe it or not, focusing on instructional technology. Who would have known that in the fall that we would be taking a three-year plan that we had on paper and accelerating it to basically becoming a three-month plan? And that's exactly what we did. So a big thanks to, not only to the members of the Teacher Advisory Council, but also to all the teachers that are out there in our buildings and serving our students and families. We spent time on the day-to-day dashboard. We spent significant amount of time talking about pathways for students and looking at all the different options that we can begin to promote and market and brand for the school system so that our families become more aware of the many different options for our students. Like I said, we did then reconvene recently, just a few weeks ago in the month of May, where we took that as, we took the opportunity to focus the meeting on lessons learned, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting from President Savigny. We spent some time listening to these top-notch, dynamic educators across our system, elementary, middle and high school. And we listened closely to what we did well, obviously what we can do better, and then most importantly, where should we be going? And we know that, as you said earlier, Dr. Lockard, we're always listening and we want to be listening to those that we're serving. Those are our teachers. So I think overall, the year was very successful. It was very timely, the May meeting. But I also wanted to share that as we go into the summer, we recently communicated with that advisory council that we will be reaching out to them on a regular basis as one of our stakeholders to provide us with some insight as we prepare for the upcoming fall return. Any questions?
And Mr. Anderson, I want to thank you for those comments. I think when you look at the minutes of those meetings, it's pretty obvious that, you know, we were on a very timely basis with the instructional technology plan. And like you said, the fact that we were right in the middle of developing that is probably what helped get us a leg up on the whole digital learning platform or the virtual platform much quicker than we expected. So, you know, we didn't do it flawlessly, but I think we were out ahead of many other counties and it was because it was really front and center on radar screen at that time at the beginning of the year. And I really appreciate the discussions that this group had just about two weeks ago because we recognize that we didn't do it flawlessly. You know, as we've said, you know, we've provided lots of praise and rightly so about how well we did do in a very short timeframe with getting up and running on the digital platform. But we know that there are things that we could have done better and things that we need to do better come September, even if it ends up being a hybrid platform or anything like that. So, but I just want to thank this group and their energy and their insight. They truly are, as you said, experts in their field and it's always a fantastic experience to have the brainstorming and discussions with this group, but the ideas that they have and the energy and enthusiasm that they put behind them. So I just want to say it's been an excellent experience for me to be on that group and thanks to everyone on that group for their hard work.
Thank you. I know that everyone appreciates it. Any other questions? We are very excited about next year. There's several topics, as you can imagine, that are rising to the top. It's just going to be, you know, how do we, as you said, President Savigny, how do we channel the energy of this group to focus on the topics that we feel where we as a system really need to spend some additional time? Very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, and that concludes all of the reports of the board-appointed councils. And so as we said a few minutes ago, we will have the approval of those, the makeup of those new councils in the August timeframe. So we'll be seeing some additional information at that point and what the goals are of what we want each one of these councils to accomplish over the course of the coming year. So looking forward to that. And then hopefully next year, we'll be able to run with the new format of hearing back from those particular councils.
Yep. I would really value that. We, you know, we get so much out of these councils. It's volunteers from our community, really important work, and I think it certainly deserves a little bit of our time face-to-face where we can have some question and answer and conversation about the important work going on all year.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you, Dr. Lockard. Okay, and with that, we will move on to Section Six, which are the action items. And the first one up is the Award of Bids. So, board members, I need a motion for the approval of the Award of Bids. Moved by Ms. Pataglia and seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Okay, so now we will move on to the discussion. And, Dr. Lockard, before I hand it back over to you to tee some of these up, we do have a very long list of Award of Bids. There are 16 items on this list. There are two in particular that I expect there to be significant conversation around. The first one being item number one, which is the East Middle School Engineering, Architectural and Engineering Services bid, and also the item number four, the school bus stop-arm cameras. So what I'd like to propose, board members, if it's okay with you, that we address those two items separately and have some robust conversations about those, potentially vote on each one of those separately, and then take the rest of the 14 items and do those as a group and just see if we have any questions on any of those 14 before voting on them. Is that acceptable to folks to take it in that way?
Sounds fair.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. So with that, Dr. Lockard, if you want to give us opening comments on item number one?
Sure. Well, if it pleases the board, what I'd like to do is if we could start with the item number four, since Sheriff Deweese is on with us, and then we could go back to.
That makes sense. Board members, do we have consensus? That's all fine with all of us to do item number four first?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So I will go ahead and get started and then we'll go from there. So this is the bid on school bus stop-arm cameras. And this is the contract for the initiative we've discussed with you over time, notably back in December during the strategic plan Pillar Four update. This contract with Bus Patrol is part of a school bus safety initiative with Sheriff Deweese and his command to provide stop-arm cameras on buses and ticket motorists who run the red lights on stopped school buses. Sheriff Deweese worked with the commissioners earlier this year to pass the required ordinance. I believe that was in the months of February and early March. And for our part, under the contract, we were able to accomplish at no cost to the Board of Education, the outstanding school security initiatives related to pupil transportation, specifically active GPS on school buses and emergency communication on school buses. And these are long existing goals identified many years ago by the Security Advisory Council, which we just heard from, and also now included in Pillar Four of our strategic plan. There are some additional technology cost savings and benefits to us as well, which we'll touch on in a moment. And if there's any additional revenue generated from the stop-arm camera initiative beyond the cost of the technology, which again, Bus Patrol is paying for in this contract, that ends up ultimately going to Sheriff Deweese. Let me be clear and restate, there's no cost to the board in this contract. Bus Patrol will pay to purchase and install all the technology upfront. They'll recoup that through fees collected through school bus safety violations. If more fines are collected than the cost of technology, that revenue becomes part of the cost share between the sheriff and Bus Patrol. Regardless, no cost to the board, even the event, they don't have enough fines that are collected to fully fund the technology cost of implementation. So we're able to accomplish, like I said before, active GPS and a bus radio system at no cost to us. Finally, the contract covers our annual fee for our TransFinder routing software as well. So not only is the contract no cost for us, but between the coverage of the existing annual fee and the cost avoidance for bus radios and active GPS, there's savings, real savings to the board of over a million dollars. We had earmarked a million dollars in our capital budget for bus radios alone. And at the last time a contract proposal for active GPS came forward, it was a little over $300,000. So the capital funds that we had set aside there may now be applied to other identified security projects, which I'm sure Duane could tell you there are many. The operating savings will help cover annual increases also to our bus contractors under the Transportation Reimbursed Form. I'm almost done. The contract will allow us to deploy all these systems for the 2021 school year. For your information, the stop-arm system is already in place in three other Maryland school systems as well as other school systems nationally, with many other Maryland systems considering it. The sheriff and his command have reviewed and researched the technology and the system and approved the contract. The GPS system included is one of the industry leaders. It's used in many systems. It will include all the typical GPS features, including a parent application. More importantly, it allows to know where our children are on buses at all times, even in less extreme emergency situations. It allows us to identify buses, reroute them as necessary for things like weather events or road closures or accidents or something happening out of school. It also let us streamline our age-old process of more efficiently notifying schools and parents in situations when buses are late. The emergency communication radio system included in this contract is a system that the county government is already using and they're considering expanding that. Because it also is a cellular type of system, we can contact a single bus or any group of buses at once, whether they're on a route in the county, out of our county, or even out of the state on a field trip or such. As noted, the system is being used by the county and is linkable to county emergency communications. Under the contract, we also provide a unit for every bus contractor. So individual bus contractors can communicate with their individual buses. I'm not sure if Mr. Doug Brown is on this call, but he's in charge of County Department of Public Works, served many years on our Security Advisory Council, and he certainly could offer his two cents for the utilization that the county has of this system. The sheriff and I have talked a little bit about the Public Information Initiative, which would be important to inform citizens in advance of the stop-arm system becoming operational and what that means. And lastly, the entire contract has been reviewed and approved, like we said, by Sheriff Deweese and his command, as well as our staff and your legal counsel. Mr. Omealy reviewed the contract, the procurement process, the underlying RFP selection process, and the contract on which we are piggybacking from Howard County. And since Sheriff Deweese is here and has been waiting for me to get finished with that, I want to thank him for his work on this effort and the ongoing partnership in promoting student and school bus safety. And this is part of a larger school bus safety initiative, so I wanted to make sure he had a chance to share his comments. Sheriff.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. Let me be clear that the money does not come to Sheriff Jim Deweese. Although I would love it, but kind of the way that works, there's revenue like that. I have to create a revenue account through the county government. But within that revenue account, I have to create a statement of purpose for that money. So for auditing purposes, they would go back and make sure that the money was used for the intended purposes that the revenue was generated. In this case, for school safety initiatives, for training for school safety, everything around that money should be really directed towards school safety and that's how we'll craft that purpose statement when we create a revenue account. With me is Lieutenant Mark DeBoer. He oversees the school resource program for my office and then Major Rich Hart. You guys know them from, you know, meetings at the Security Council, but Rich has also been the chair for the Security Council. Dave Stem, I believe, is on the call also at his home, has put a lot of work in vetting the contracts, the laws, and getting us to a point where we can push forward with this. And Tim Burke from the county's attorney's office has looked at contracts from me, looked at the ordinances, and that's who I seek assistance from on the legal side. And prior to him was Gail Kessler. She has since left the county government. So a lot of people put an awful lot of work into this. And board members, I've spoken with most of you, many of you about this initiative. I'm pleased that you guys are on board with this and making it a very important student safety initiative to get this to fruition. This board, you guys, my office, the entire Carroll County Public School community, we all have an obligation to make sure there's a safe learning environment for students and staff. And we discussed that earlier with the SRO program. For me, in my eyes, and I think in most of you, your eyes, student safety starts door-to-door. It starts the second that student leaves the door and goes down to several hundred different bus stops throughout the county. And so, door-to-door for me. And the stop-arm camera initiative really fits perfectly into this door-to-door philosophy of keeping our children safe and providing additional measures of safety to our wonderful bus drivers. You know, the hundreds of school bus drivers that shuttle our most precious cargo to and from school each day and they just do an impeccable job. There's just no two ways about it. We owe it to them and our students and the families of our students to put the latest safety features and technology in our fleet of buses so that we can be on the cutting edge of safety. Some of you may or may not know this, but my mother drove a school bus for Carroll County Public Schools for the better part of 20 years. She drove the Liberty High School route and she drove the feeder schools, Sykesville Middle and Freedom Elementary. And my brothers and sisters and I would ride her bus until it was our turn to be dropped off at our respective schools. And my mother would have been, she takes this term to heart. She was a gear grinder. She drove a school bus when it was a four-speed or a five-speed. That's how I learned how to drive a stick shift was watching my mother drive a school bus. They didn't have cameras, they didn't have anything, no technology. She was really getting it done and stick shifts, we laugh in law enforcement, stick shift are anti-theft devices today because kids, including mine, are freaked out when they see them and they don't want to take your cars out. So, you know, each year throughout the county or throughout the country and including here in Carroll County, bus drivers take one day annually and self-report stop-arm traffic violations or violations that surround their school buses during their routes. In 2019, drivers in Carroll County reported 113 violations throughout the county. This is on a single day. It's a tremendous amount of violations in one day, much less the numbers that would shake out for an entire year. Law enforcement can't be everywhere and see every violation. In fact, it is very difficult and manpower-intensive to catch a motorist violating a stop-arm. Bus Patrol system, the Bus Patrol system provides a force multiplier for law enforcement. And honestly, that's what I like about the Bus Patrol system, its randomness. I am not a fan of speed or red light cameras. In fact, the last one was deactivated last week in this county and it's at Old Malcolm Drive, just north of, or just south of 140. To me, they change the behavior only in the area they're affixed in. That's it. Stop-arm cameras on school buses will change the behavior when motorists see any bus, anywhere, at any time in Carroll County. With the proper media blast, like Dr. Lockard said, notifications, education for our citizens, motorists should and will be extra cautious around school buses. At the end of the day, if you are habitual, aggressive. At the end of the day, if you are a habitual aggressive driver, we want motorists to change their behavior when they see our buses for fear of being sighted. Funding for this system also supplies other technology advancements, like Dr. Lockard said, radios, phones, the ability to GPS locate. Radio is similar to what my deputies drive around, two-way radios for communication. You know, over the past several years, and since I can remember, law enforcement has needed to respond to assist a bus driver for one reason or another and really couldn't get an exact location or find them. And I'll tell you one incident. So I was sitting in my driveway up in the northern part of the county waiting for a middle school bus to show up and pick up my youngest child. It was late, I needed to get to work. I was in my uniform in my police car, so I decided not to wait for the school bus to get there. I made a right out of my driveway and got several miles down the road toward North Carroll Middle, only to hear a call for service come out on my radio on my street for a school bus that had stopped to pick up children, and there was a fight and parents arguing in the middle of the road. It was my son's bus, and had I turned left instead of right, I would have found it in 30 seconds and been able to assist. It did take some time for the school bus driver to disclose her location and give a good location for the incident so law enforcement could respond. Just a few years ago, during a snow squall, I followed several buses along with my deputies throughout the county that had to reroute because they couldn't get to locations, they couldn't get to school bus stops because they couldn't get up specific roads because of the snow, specifically up in the northern part of the county. It is 2020, and these things cannot happen. They simply can't happen. It is not a luxury to know where our buses are, but as a parent and the sheriff of this county, I expect you to know where the buses are. It's time to install this technology in our buses. The time's right, the price is certainly right. And all the vetting has been done to make sure we have a quality company that provides a quality product with little, no risk to all parties involved. And with the support of all five commissioners who passed the ordinance and are on board with this, me, the sheriff, our bus contractors, you, and just about everybody I've spoken to that believes this is really a good plan and something that we should jump on, this is simply to me a no-brainer. It's time to do it. So if anybody has any questions, I'd certainly be more than happy to answer them. I don't know, Steve, if you have any more folks that need to speak regarding this.
Thank you, Dana. I will turn it over to a board member.
Go ahead.
Sure. Sheriff Dewey, I just wanted to say, I know, you know, here in the, you know, year 2020, we have some incredible technology. However, cell phones are not 100%. And the two-way radio system has a very low statistic of failing. And, you know, you might be, you know, out there, northern end of the county toward the PA line, and you don't have cellphone service, but that two-way radio will bounce off the different tower sites, and you can definitely hear it. So I think it is something that is extremely beneficial. You know, having that service in Carroll County, with, you know, there's different state highways have them, the county has them. You know, it hardly may get hurt, is very reliable. So I'm very glad that we're going to be looking into this and doing this. And that way, the bus services, you know, it's a safety thing for the bus drivers. I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it, too. So if something does happen like the snow squall, a tornado warning, like those are things that they can immediately have information on in the event there's somewhere there's no cell service. So I'm excited about that.
You know what, Tara, you're right. We are products of that in law enforcement, where I supply every deputy with a phone, but we also have radios on our hips and we have them in our cars. The most powerful radio that we have is the one that's the base station in our vehicle. And it supplies the, it's great, and Doug Brown could tell you, because he was on the front line and Scott Campbell, folks that put the latest technology in our hands. Its coverage rate is just absolutely exceptional. There's very few places that it wouldn't pick up, if any, quite honestly. And the other thing with that radio system, the uniqueness of it, is that we could switch over and speak with that school bus if we wanted to. So if there's something that takes place, we could talk to the school bus. We could talk to whomever using this radio system wherever we're at. And so you're absolutely right. Cell phones up in my area, up in the northern part of the county, I know you live up north also, there are spots where we drop it, and, but the radio picks up just about everywhere. It's really, really a good plan. And the radios are not cheap, by the way. They're very expensive equipment.
And I grew up in a household of two-way radios. So I'm very well-educated on the communication techniques of them. So it's, it's a good product.
Two questions. First, and kind of piggybacking what you guys just talked about, I think this is a five-year contract with an option to renew for five years. Are they going to keep up with technological changes as it goes through? And update things, you know, a lot of technology will change in 10 years. And then my second question, so I don't have to talk again. Let's say these all get installed this summer. What's your rollout for PR to tell people this is happening? And before people, you know, and when would people start physically getting tickets?
So I know John O'Neill's on the call also. Let me answer question two, and then I think John's more appropriate to answer question one about technology upgrades. And I certainly buy an awful lot of technology, and you guys too, within CCPS. And I certainly wouldn't buy any technology that wasn't supported for the duration of the time that we are under contract with them and any upgrades that would come with that. But question two about PR, so every year, regardless of whether we're doing Bus Patrol or Stop Arm Camera Enforcement, I get money through the Maryland Highway Safety Office to do public service announcements. So you'll hear me on WTTR, you'll see billboards. Around the time schools go back in, so that I'm warning motorists that the big yellow buses are back out there, keep a close eye out for them. But I think this year, with the passage of this, will tailor those messages to indicate that there are now stop-arm cameras and ticketing devices within the system so that we can warn people. But my intent would be verbal warnings up until that system is situated and ready to roll. And then if you're violating the Stop Arm Camera on day one, then a citation is mailed to you. So our intent is to have that system up and running by the first day of school. And Kenny, I know you have a lot of anxiety, and we all do, albeit hopefully school opens up when it's supposed to. And I'm crossing my fingers that it does, because I still have one that needs to go back. But my intent is to make sure those citations are rolled out and written the second that the school bus system is up and running. But I think the education piece is pretty easy for us because we've been doing that, not only my office, but CCPS does it also. And we can certainly put a more elaborate system in place. Bus Patrol will help us with that. But also, I'm familiar with it, and so is John and the staff over there. And I think a unified message between law enforcement, the schools, and the bus contractors. I would love to have a bus contractor on WTTR with me saying, you know, "We're with the sheriff and the schools on this. Stop for our buses. Our children's lives matter." So let's do that.
Yeah, thank you, Sheriff. And we're committed to helping with that, too, with email blasts of our own, social media posts. We could do videos, or you could do videos, however, and we could link to those through social media. Even Commissioner Wance has a video out there on his YouTube about some of the key points that could be a place where we link as well. So we're on board with that. Right now, where we sit with the award before you tonight, we believe we would have most, if not all, of the buses installed and ready for the start of the school year. We would certainly begin with the in-county routes and then move to, you know, the remaining buses after we get the buses done in county first. We're kind of in a good spot in a queue where even though this company is installing for other Maryland school systems, we're sort of next in line if this is something you act on tonight. As far as Mr. Kyler, your question, that's a great question. When we asked, when we had some of the reviews with the different, all of the different vendors who were initially part of the review, and they answered it like this. They're on the hook for maintaining the technology, including any upgrades that happen anywhere in a five-year period of time. And they want that because they don't want to maintain or support multiple levels of, you know, of current version of a product over time. So if somewhere between now and five years, they come out with a new camera that's what they support, then they'll figure out the right timing to come in and have all of their systems upgraded. They don't want to have, you know, 25 different versions of something out there over time either. So that was a question we actually asked. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Sheriff Dewey, Marcia. Thank you for keeping us safe, and we go way back. And I can for a fact know that this will definitely help. I lived through it with my sister on Route 482. When the state police sat in the driveway, right out here in front of my farm, they would not pass the bus illegally. But when they sat there, when they were gone, it got so bad that my sisters had to take them to school. But I am friends with a lot of bus drivers, and they have some concerns, and it doesn't have anything to do with you specifically. Number one, for anyone listening, the bus contractors got their contract on Friday, and their attorneys from the national and state level are still looking at their contracts. And I think they have more questions and would like to talk to you all about these questions since they received the contract. And they really want to see, if you have $120,000 vehicle, and they're going to put more stuff on your bus, virtually, it's very nice, and I know we have had the pandemic. But they want to see how it's going to be installed and how it works, and not being told to go to Montgomery County and watch it work. So, and I know when we went through the Senovia system, that was ugly and did not go well. And thank you for snapping that away. And they really, the bus contractors would really like to sit down and talk to you, Sheriff Dewey, or whoever is going to run this. And they have questions. And I can't ask for anything more than that to have their questions answered since the new, since the contract came out. So I am talking on behalf of them, and they're the ones that get our kids to school, and they do have questions. So, you know, we need to all be in this together, and we can't run this without our bus drivers. And it's not everyone, but yes, there are some concerns. So just, I think it would be nice if, you know, we had everybody buy in and they all understood everything. Do you, does that make sense?
Yeah, you and I talked about that.
Absolutely.
And I feel like that I've built a good amount of trust within the folks that drive our buses, that, that own our buses. And I'm a big qualified to speak because of my background. I will, I agree with you. They should see a bus that has this set up. And John and I have spoken about that, Mike Hardisty and I have spoken about that. I have a lot of faith in the system that we're putting together, the contracts that were written. And I want them to, they had an opportunity to be on the call, albeit before a contract showed up, I understand that.
That's, yeah, that's the problem now. Since the contract showed up, they, I think they have more questions. And I just want everybody to work together and to get this all hashed out and do it the right way, so everybody's included.
I want to also, but I can tell you that I'm behind this 110%.
Absolutely.
I know that you are, and I know that the contractors are. But I think that we need to pass this because if you delay it a month, you might as well delay it for another year. Because the time constraints are so strict right now with getting the equipment installed. And so I'm fearful that we won't get it installed in time. And I'm confident that between me and the folks from CCPS and you, if you want to sit in on it, that we can alleviate all the anxiety with any questions they have contractually.
That's, that's what they need. And they need to see it, how it's put in and worked. And yes, I do want this because I'm on the security system, and I know how much money will save us. But I want them to be included, so.
I do, too. I do, too. So, and that is, and the pandemic has really screwed an awful lot of stuff up. Because I would have loved to have taken a field trip or had Montgomery County come up here and basically all of us sit on a bus and start riding around and seeing how the system works. But we didn't have the luxury of doing that.
And that's what we did with Senovia. And then once we saw it, it was like, wow, ugh. So, but I want to, I want a good working relationship with these guys.
Yep, I agree with you.
Yes, so Sheriff, if I could just suggest that, and I completely understand exactly what you're saying about the timeframe, right? Like, we need to act on it now, if we're going to act on it, to make sure that we're in line ahead of other school systems, to make sure that this is on the buses by the beginning of the year. But could we make a suggestion so if there are additional concerns of the bus contractors now that they've received the contract, that there can be, and I know you've already had a session with those folks to answer a lot of questions, but if we could have maybe one more of those sessions, just to answer any additional questions that have come up since they received the contract, that that would give us comfort from a key stakeholder that, you know, we're going to answer all of the issues that they may have or concerns.
Donna, that's at the pleasure of the board. I mean, if that's what you guys want to do, then absolutely. I would urge you and ask you to take a vote on moving this forward and then letting us set up a meeting. And I'll do it tomorrow if they want to. I don't care to go through a lot of the stuff that they want to talk about. And they can talk to whomever they want. If they want just me and me alone, I don't care. However you want to do it, at your pleasure, just tell me what you want to do.
Well, I just want them to be able to see how it's installed, how it actually works. I'm a visual person. I'm an old farm girl. I want to see how the mechanics of this works. And then I want you to talk to them. And I really appreciate that. Because we got to all work together. And so they don't feel like it's jammed down their throats and everybody's on the same page. I get it.
I understand.
Okay.
And Sheriff, I do want to thank you for your leadership role in this. And because, you know, the safety of our students is really mission-critical. And the 113 incidents per day that you quoted earlier is a very sobering statistic. And, you know, while that may actually end up generating a fair bit of money in fines, I don't particularly care about the fines. I want the sentinel effect that that's going to have in changing aggressive driver behavior to improve the security of our, the safety and security of our students. So I appreciate you taking a leadership role on this. And the fact that, you know, as Marcia had indicated, you know, we've had discussions in the past about needing active GPS and communication on our buses, and the fact that we are able to get this part and parcel in one contract that doesn't cost us a dime. And, and trust me, so we've had legal review, the contract for sufficiency, and we beat up Ed Omealy in closed session, you know, with legal questions, making sure that the contract did in fact say what we thought it said. You know, that this is definitely going to not cost us a dime. I think that this is, you know, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and it's time to pull the trigger. And I think the one concern that we still have is the key stakeholders in our bus contractors. So if we could have one more session with them to just answer any remaining questions that they have, but that we would take, I'm sorry?
Do I need to make a motion to add that? That they have a meeting with the sheriff and then also see an actual installation, how it actually works live? Or how do we do?
If I could ask Dr. Dorsey, I don't think we've heard from you yet this evening. I just wanted to make sure that we all had our comments in, and then we can decide if there needs to be a motion.
Right, I think you've combed through the questions very well. Again, I guess the thing that sort of was startling is that they say when something sounds too good to be true, that maybe you better take another look at it. I mean, it certainly sounds too good to be true as far as not having any cost to the board and looking at our savings. But again, the number one piece is what's already been stressed earlier. It's the safety of the kids. So again, I really see the benefits in having this and in having the communication. And I agree, Donna, the sobering, single-day number of violations. I mean, that's, when you think of only one day, I mean, that's pretty scary when you think of the risk that our students are in, you know, for months and for the school year. So again, I think it's something that certainly is needed. I am concerned, though, concerning the bus drivers because I was hoping that the bus drivers, all bus drivers and contractors, would certainly see the benefits. the bus drivers, all bus drivers and contractors would certainly see the benefits of having this. So it's a little concerning to hear that not everyone is on board. I know we've received some communications from, I think we've gotten one, from one person who's very much, um, on board with this. So again, I'm fine with it. I think it's certainly, um, needed as far as securing the, the safety of our children while they're riding the buses. And if we can move forward with making sure that all of our contractors are on board with this, I, I think that's going to serve us well.
That they are on board. They're just concerned about their buses, about how it's put on and all that. Yes, they want children's safety.
Oh, I, I know they do. I mean, they're out for that every time they get behind the wheel. But I was reading in that, that, you know, that they weren't maybe all for it since they didn't know what it was going to be like as far as their buses were concerned and, but they don't have a problem with having the system.
The number one thing is safety.
I know. So they don't have a problem with actually having the system on the bus. They just want to see how it's going to be done.
They want to know how it's going to be done and how it works and, and those type things. You know, if you had $112,000 vehicle, you'd want a, a radios put in. You know, they are concerned about that. And I understand that.
May, may, may I make another comment real quick? I mean, let's be clear, the, uh, the bus patrol system, you know, they looked at the numbers and the numbers are staggering. And so bus patrol wouldn't come in here. Um, you're right, Dr. Dorsey, it does look too good to be true. But the numbers, the numbers are what are staggering. And so they look at that and their, their risk and reward, they, they need unfortunately for people to run past the buses in order to pay for the system through, through fines. I mean, that's the cold hard facts. My goal is that after five years, you guys sever your relationship with me because nobody's running past those school buses and I've got no purpose in this project. But, but the reality is that's not going to happen. There are going to be people that go past these buses and needed, and need that reminder that, that these big yellow buses are out there. So, um, you know, the return on investment within the five-year period, uh, you know, there were some, some talks and I'd been early on when I became Sheriff, talked about, uh, this system with the former superintendent. And the, the technology wasn't where I thought it should be. Um, you know, they, they didn't want to put it on every bus. It needs to be on every bus. Uh, low-profile, uh, systems, I think, uh, they look really good. You can barely tell that they're there. The technology is up to speed. And some of the stuff I'd heard, well, camera systems would go down on, on some of the features that were put on and just the camera systems on buses. And it would take some time for the company to come out and repair them. But in this case, uh, the company's not making any money if its camera system isn't as up to date and, and working as possible. It's, they gotta, they gotta have the latest and greatest technology on, on these buses in, in order to, to go through and adjudicate these cases. And, uh, my goal was not to make any money on this. In fact, if you came to me and said, it's too late, by the way, John, I know you're listening. If you came to me and said, can you just do this? I would find a way within my own office to just do it and, and vet this process and be a part of it regardless of, of, uh, the tail end of it. So, um, I'm, I'm behind it 100%. Marcia, I agree with you. Um, I have no problems with meeting with them and, and
Thank you so much.
And making sure that, that word is together.
Absolutely.
And I will look into a program that I don't think is, uh, full of integrity and, and, and promise.
I, I really appreciate that.
And, and thanks. My, I don't know why my computer's acting up tonight. I might have missed a little bit of what you said. So if I duplicate, I apologize. But, but Mrs. Herbert, you're speaking for the bus drivers here. I, I think, I think we need to pass it tonight. We need to get ahead of the other systems getting installed. And I think there's, there's two concerns. One, some conversation and training and buy-in. But number two, I wasn't here for this last system. But what I've heard from people is complaints about, suppose it is installed wrong. Suppose, like you say, they got a little bit of money in these buses, something gets scratched up. Is there some way to have like a, a sign off that everybody's happy with the installation? And then, and obviously you guys probably already have this, Mr. Hardisty, but, but then if they have any.
Evening, board members. Yes, we, we do have that in the contract, that the bus patrol is totally responsible for the installation and any repairs that might be necessary throughout the life of the contract.
Great, great. Yeah, my thing cut off again. I apologize. But, but yeah, that's, that's to me the two concerns. And, because I think they see the need for, we see the need for it and we need to get it, get it going quickly.
The, the other thing, board members, that might be worth noting is we will have, um, you know, pending your vote, we obviously wouldn't do it unless you vote. But pending your vote, we would develop procedures in concert with the contractors. And that would be, I don't want to suggest it would be identical, but it would be very similar to the procedures we have, um, with the internal cameras that have been on the buses for, I guess, maybe 10 years or so. Um, and so, you know, we'll start that if you vote and, and they'll have clearly a good voice in that. And, and hopefully that'll also help resolve whatever questions remain for some of them, uh, as we go into the summer.
Yeah, definitely want to see us being proactive with this. I, I don't, you know, I think we've been very lucky. Um, and we have been very lucky where we haven't had an incident like we've seen at the beginning of school years on social media where a child was hit by a car because somebody drove up on the sidewalk or passed the bus when someone was crossing. We've been extremely lucky. And unfortunately, a lot of times, we can't get the tag numbers from someone that's passing a bus. So I'm, I want to move forward with this as much as possible. I mean, if we're having a company install something, I mean, obviously you want a company that knows how to install equipment properly. Um, you know, they're not just going to screw it into the dashboard and just leave the screws exposed. I mean, obviously they're going to want to make sure wires are hidden properly, um, zip tied properly, you know, case properly. So, you know, I think, um, I think we definitely need to move forward with this, be proactive.
Okay. So, board members, I'm definitely hearing consensus, um, around everyone's thoughts. The one concern that we still have is just making sure that the bus contractors have a chance to vet any additional questions that they have. But I don't think that that should stop us from taking the vote tonight. Um, so if we can make a, a motion that we're going to vote on this award of bid, um, with the, the caveat that there will be a session, um, between, um, Mr. Hardisty, Sheriff Dewey, and any bus contractors that still have concerns, that there, there will be that session before, um, the, the devices are installed on the buses. Does that?
And also for them to see how it actually works visually.
Sure.
They want to see how it's installed, like, like on a real bus.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
Can I ask a question first?
Thanks.
Oh, sure. Hi, Commissioner Frazier.
Yeah, I do have a question first. Uh, my question is, it's a five-year contract. This is a vendor. I'm assuming we've never used before. I'm not anticipating anything going wrong, but what if something at the end of the first year were, were not satisfied with this at all? Is there a way out for Carroll County Public Schools? Or are you committed to that five years regardless of, of this type of service you're getting from this vendor? That's my concern because we haven't used a vendor before. As far as I know, it's a five-year contract. I'm all for safety. I, I mean, I was one of the commissioners of one of the five. It was all for this. So we, we pushed it forward. But that's a, that's a concern, a real concern of mine for the five-year contract.
And Commissioner Frazier, that's a legitimate question. And I will say that we asked it when we were having our, our legal discussion, um, earlier. So, Ms. Eisenberg, would you be able to address that?
Yes. The, there is a termination section to the contract, uh, which states that if any party commits a material breach of the agreement and the breach is not cured within a reasonable period of time, the contract is
And at that time, there would be no cost to, to the school system to have devices, to have any of the equipment removed from the buses, right? There, there's still no cost to the school system at that point.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Okay, so, um, based on all of that discussion, did, did anybody else have any additional questions at this point? Okay, so then, um, Ms. Herbert, do you want to make the, the motion?
Yes, I make the motion that we accept this contract with, uh, two amendments. One, that the bus contractors will meet with the sheriff's department and, um, for further questioning. And then actually, to be able to actually visually see how it is installed and how it actually works. And I think everybody will be happy then.
Okay, that is moved by Ms. Herbert. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. And did we have any other comments around that particular motion?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Dewey for listening. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. You guys were a lot of fun, but only invite me once a year. Okay.
Sorry.
You don't want to go through this every month?
We have the least, we have the least two more hours and you're welcome to stay. Just one quick comment. Um, we, we beat this up pretty good and that's great. Uh, I'm not assuming with anybody here, uh, Mr. Hardisty, uh, Mr. Neal, Sheriff Dewey, our superintendent, all of this may have happened anyway. If we hadn't all beat it around and talked about it, um, like you say, you do procedures, you do all this. But, um, you know, we hear things and, and we're concerned. But thank you. I think all the answers are great.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Sheriff, thank you so much for being here tonight to, um, you know, join in the conversation and, and make sure that we are all comfortable and, and making sure this is moving forward in the proper way.
You're welcome. And just so you know, I looked at the two guys sitting in front of me and ordered them to get a meeting together ASAP with their contractors. And amazing how fast they responded to that. So, um, so we're work, we're working on that as we speak to make sure we get a meeting together. And it would certainly be nice if we could get a bus up at the same time as the meeting and do it all in one failsuit as soon as possible. So we'll work on that ASAP.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sheriff. And so we had discussed at, at the, as we were starting, the award of bids section, that we are going to take, um, these two items separately. So what I would like to do is now that we have the motion on the table that's been seconded for the, um, award of bids for item number four, which is the school bus stop armed cameras, um, with the, the motion as amended by, by Ms. Herbert, I would like to take the vote on that one item right now, if that is okay with everyone. Okay, I see lots of shaking heads. So I think we're good. So with that, I will call for the vote and the approval of the item on the award of bids, the school bus stop armed cameras with the motion as amended by Ms. Herbert and seconded by Dr. Dorsey. All those in favor, if I can get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Wonderful. And, uh, Sheriff Dewey has already discussed how he's moving forward on the, on the motion. So, um, Dr. Lockard, any other items on that particular one? Or would we like to, to move on to, or back to item number one, I guess?
Back to item number one, Architectural and Engineering Services East Middle School. So let me give you a little intro and background here. So at your request, the commissioners approved local planning funding in FY21 for the East Middle School. I want to acknowledge Commissioner Frazier, who's on the call with us this evening, for his support of the project and thank the commissioners for moving the project forward. This represents the first next step at your level, the approval of the award for Architectural and Engineering Services. The selection committee, including Principal Carver at East Middle, facilities and construction staff, and purchasing staff, followed our process for selection of professional service contracts. And I bring you the recommendation of Ford Copeland Mock for the award. We're all very familiar with, uh, their quality work on the Career and Tech Center project. So this is a firm with whom we are familiar. The funding for the award is now included in the CIP. During the Career Tech Project, at various points, when we brought different components of the project for approval, we invoked the process found in your Board Policy and Administrative Regulations. It's DG, DJA, Appointment of Architectural Engineering and Construction Management Firms for Capital Improvement Projects. And this is a quality-based selection process. And it's been a construction industry standard for many decades for professional service contracts for major capital projects. Accordingly, it's authorized for local school systems by the State Interagency Commission for School Construction, the IAC for short. And it's also contained in their state regulations. So we've been following it for at least the last 20-plus years as part of policy and reg DJA, uh, which were actually originally developed with Mr. Omealy and Ms. Eisenberg. Sorry to put, uh, put the years to those names, but, um, just wanted to give you a little history there. Um, and we don't simply use a quality-based selection process because it's common in the industry or because we have done it for 20-some years, but because our historical experience was that this process has consistently resulted in a larger pool of bidders for professional service contracts and in high-quality services for the vast majority of the many large projects we've done over time. But I also realize we haven't, um, done a lot of major whole building construction projects for the last decade. So I wanted to just make sure I took a moment to discuss the process in our regulations, which is of course available on our website. Should anybody want to look at that. The process includes a very specific, um, selection schedule, including development of scope of work, identifications of the requirements for the proposal, announcement of the request for proposal, the RFP, evaluation of proposals, including interviews, ranking of proposals and selection, and recommendation for award. The components for each of these stages of the selection schedule are detailed in Regulation DJA. The regulation even includes a sample or typical professional services contract selection process. In the interest of time, I don't want to dive too deep into all those details, but in general, bid price is 25% of a selection score. And the remaining 75 points or technical points are determined based on factors, including past performance on similar work in terms of quality, safety, past performance working with state and local agencies in planning, designing, and constructing projects, experience and abilities in scheduling and budget management, current workload of the firm and ability to accomplish the proposed project, special qualifications, experience, design approach, et cetera, originality and design quality on previous projects, and experience in the construction delivery method proposed for the project. The committee tabulates the bid price and the technical points on a rubric, which is compiled for you as part of the recommendation for award. And so with that explanation on how the background of process works, I'm pleased to bring you the recommendation of A and E Services for the East Middle School Project. And again, really, I know a lot of you already know those things. I thought for our listening audience, it would be important to hear that there's a whole lot that happens in the background as per our requirements and our own policies and regs that get us to this point to make those recommendations. I'll stop there.
And Dr. Lockard, I want to thank you for going through each of those pieces because, you know, when we're looking at the award of bids, you know, the only thing that's, that's really like front and center in front of us is what were the bid amounts. But that's only worth 25% in the rubric. So when we're making a decision to not go with potentially low bidder because of, you know, 75% of the quality points, but, you know, we, I really wanted to make sure that we were all aware of exactly what that rubric looked like, what the, how the quality points were awarded, and make sure that, as you said, that the folks in the public really understand the process and what goes into that rubric, um, especially when we're not necessarily going with low bidder on a particular project. So thank you for all of that. So, um, board members, any other comments or questions about this item?
I just want to be first in line. I'm sorry. I'm excited about this too. So I just want to be first in line and I'm glad that, you know, we've got a reputable firm.
I have a question. Sorry.
Is that Commissioner Frazier?
Yeah, I put my camera back. Is it on? Okay, camera just came on. But yes, I have a question. Um, because looking at your technical points here, have we used SCI before? Because technically they're the highest, their bid has the highest score for, for technical points. Their price is a little bit higher. And as I'm looking at the prices across for the bids that we have here, had you come up, and I, I don't want the half-hour explanation, just a quick explanation, the difference between, you know, the, the $2,398,000 and it's, it's not even $200,000 difference, but it's, it's almost, you know, like three points difference there. And that really was the difference in those two, in those two bids, was that one price. Where if you're looking at the best technical aspect, and personally, that's what I like to see, technically, who has the best product out there, they're higher. Not much higher, but they are higher. But, you know, So have you used, have we used SCI before? So have we used SEI before?
I don't believe, I'll jump in, and I don't know if Chris Hartlove wants to jump in at all, but I don't believe we've used SEI. I know Jim Marks, I'm sure he's still hanging in there, and he has a better recollection of those folks. I don't believe we have used them recently. If I'm wrong, he can step in. If he's not, he can just stay off. In terms of the, in terms of the point totals, you know, this is just a mathematical calculation. As you can see, that, you know, we had a tie between Grimmon Parker and Hord Copeland in terms of technical points. Or, I'm sorry, at the, yeah, for the technical points. So it's just the way the math plays out. It's very, it can be very close. You know, when you take the average, the Hord Copeland price proposal, proposed price is right in there, it's actually somewhat below the average when you look at it. So it is just a math, it's just the way the math calculates out.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Procop is saying, the low bidder gets the entire 25 points. And then it goes down from there. It's rationed out from there. So it's a formula, there's no, you know, manipulation. It just comes that way. However it comes out, when you add up the points, that's who gets the, that's who gets the award. And in this case, we have a high-quality firm who happens to be second lowest bid. So we're getting kind of good, very good quality for a very good price.
Okay, I was just curious, because I saw the higher score at the other thing, and if we use SEI, just curious, because this is a major project, like to go as smoothly as possible.
Absolutely. And I appreciate you asking the question, Commissioner Frazier. Ray, I would say you've got too many decimal points here.
We can round off, but we're always afraid someone's, I could also go to the thousandths if we have to.
No, I'm just kidding. I actually like to see the, see the information this way, so.
Gotcha.
So, and Commissioner Frazier did ask the question of, you know, have we used SEI before? And we do know that we've, how many times have we used Hord Copeland Mock? It's been several times in recent memory, is that correct?
Yes, several, and I wouldn't want to put an actual number on it. They've done some smaller work for us, too. So, you know, this is, you know, the second large project that they've worked with us on. But we do quite a bit of work on a smaller scale with design firms for roofing projects, smaller HVAC projects, building additions. So there's actually been a pretty wide range of consultants that, you know, that we do award to. These have just been a couple of the big ones.
Okay, Board members, any other questions? No? Then I think it makes sense to just go ahead and take the vote on item number one. So for the Architectural and Engineering Services for Design Services for the East Middle School Replacement Project, I will call for the vote as to award the bid. I'm sorry?
Do we get a motion on that one or not?
I guess we probably should take a motion to vote on this item separately. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Okay. So, Board members, then with that, any other comments? We'll take a vote on just this item number one for the award of bids. Okay. Then I will call for the vote as submitted. All those in favor, if I can get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and Dr. Lockard, that leaves us with 14 remaining items on the award of bids. Board members, we did talk earlier about how these are all, several of them are lumped together, they're technology infrastructure projects towards the end. I don't know, did we want to just see, go through them real quickly and see if we had any outstanding questions, and then just take a vote on the remaining 14 as a whole?
Sure.
Board members, did we have any questions on item number two for the Public Address System Replacements? Okay. Just go through them real quickly. Number three, the printing of the school calendars. That's an item that we continue to, we usually beat up a little bit every year, but end up coming back and saying, yes, we have a significant contingency of community members that really like to have those printouts of the calendars. So we usually.
And as a reminder, starting last year and continuing this year, we are incorporating both the informational calendar and the student parent handbook into one document. So we are realizing a $10,000 savings annually now as a result.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. Any questions on number five, the Type II school bus? Okay, and then we've got, item number six is for uniforms. Seven is for the landscape and grounds equipment. Marcia, I know you and I both had a little bit of sticker shock on that particular one.
Yeah.
But we did do some.
That was pretty stiff.
But it actually is going rate for those types of equipment in the market?
Look, mowing banks is really dangerous, so we got to take, we got to do it the right way. But I did have sticker shock.
Right. Item number eight is maintenance, repair, and operating products. Nine, the produce from Kenny Produce, Bikini Produce, sorry. Item number 10 for school and office furniture, and there is a pick list included on the back of the award of bids. Everyone had a chance to look through that. And then item number 11, the tech router desktop CNC education package. And, Dr. Lockard, I did actually have a quick question on this one, with that being a sole source procurement. How does that, how does that technically work? Usually, we have a competitive bid process. Can you help us understand, you know, what the sole source procurement is for this particular item?
You want to jump in?
Yeah.
Okay. So there are very rare instances when sole source procurement can be applied, and it's generally when there's only a single product that exists that fulfills that need. There's no one to compete with or against, in other words. And in this case, I don't have it in front of me, I have to try to find it as I talk. But in this case, there's only one product, I think, approved for schools in Maryland, and only one licensed sale or one licensed vendor for that product. And so that's why this one's a sole source.
Okay. And this is actually a grant, the grant money that will be used?
Being funded with a grant. And you've, in recent months, you've approved other career and tech upgrades that are part of the same grant as well.
Okay. Board members, any other questions on that one? Okay, and then items 12 through 16 are all IT infrastructure-related type projects, and these are things that we have to approve each year, Dr. Lockard. Does it make sense to just kind of talk very broadly about all five of these together real quickly?
Sure. Gary with us, Gary Davis. These are annual updates that we bring each year. So Gary, do you want to provide a overview briefly?
Sure. So, yeah, every year, we do the primary contract vehicles that we purchase off of. And the reason being, and we've done this for probably about 17, 18 years now, because, you know, we're constantly buying technology. So it's like a preapproval, so we don't have to wait for the board meeting to approve, you know, to get something approved. So you're approving us using things like the MEAC contract, which is the Maryland Enterprise Education Consortium, which is all the K-12, all the community college, all the public libraries, all the higher ed. It's a contract that's done through the University of Maryland system, where they have a number of procurements, RFPs, and then various people participate. In fact, Bob Henderson actually is participating in one now. So people from around the state participate in this, and then they award the contracts based on that. So there's a lot of, it's a multi-vendor award. And so that's basically how we buy most of the technology. And then like the CCPN contract is on there. Obviously, we are heavily vested in the CCPN contract and the things that we procure. So like when we use Skyline for services, much like the county and the community college and the library, we will piggyback on that contract that was awarded by the four organizations through the county government. And there's a services contract on there that we utilize for procuring some of the services that we get. So it's basically the vendors that we use, but it's a broad list of vendors that we can, that we can use. So we're not locked into any one vendor, if that makes sense.
Okay.
President Savigny, to your question, we do this not just with technology contracts, that's what's here tonight, but anytime we know we may buy more than $25,000 in a year on any contract, we bring those to you for approval. Because even though it may not be in the first purchase order, if it's going to exceed that important threshold under your policy and state regulations, then we try to bring those contracts in advance to you for your approval. So these are four or five examples tonight in the world of technology that say the same thing.
Thank you, John, for that clarification.
And Mr. Davis, we don't think that these are going to involve any significant increases in costs from last year.
No, no. And actually, the way it works, just real quickly, with the MEAC contract, they have negotiated minimum discounts, but you can always negotiate additional discounts. That's one of the things that's very nice. So they, all of the awards that they give have a minimum discount, so that any education entity in the state, if they were to use such a vendor, and if you, you know, I'm happy to talk to you in more detail about it, but there's, they have a website with all the vendors who are on it, and it tells their basic discount for what their, the things that they're selling. But, you know, you can always negotiate an additional discount. So it's locked in. The MEAC contract stuff is locked in. They're multi-year awards, but we just bring them to you every year as approval to continue using them.
Right. Okay. And our expected costs are already baked into the operating budget?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And these are all one-year contracts?
No, the MEAC, we do, we get an annual approval, but many, most of the MEAC contract things are three or five years. They have a hardware contract, an audiovisual contract, a services contract. So it depends what they're in the renewal for. Like I said, Bob Henderson is involved, I think, in a hardware contract now. So they're multi-year, but we come to you on an annual basis, so we can continue purchasing as Mr. Neal explained, because obviously, we're spending more than $25,000 on the technology items we procure.
Board members, any other questions on the technology items? No? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Davis. And I guess with that, we will be calling for the vote to approve, this will be for items two, three, and five through 16. Did I get that right? Two, three, and five through 16. Okay, so those 14 items, we are going to take the vote on those all together. And I will call for the vote on these items as submitted. All those in favor, if I can get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. So with that, I believe we can move on to item 6B. So Board members, I need a motion for the approval of appointments.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Bataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, Board members, I'm recommending two appointments for your approval. Both are recommendations to appoint two individuals from acting assistant principal in our high schools to assistant principal. I'll remind the board and our listening audience that we follow our same procedures and process when we're bringing these recommendations for appointments, albeit virtually, but still following that same process. And so the two recommendations begin with recommendation for Mary Rivera at Westminster High School, from acting assistant principal to assistant principal. And for Heather Seemis, from acting assistant principal at Manchester Valley High School to assistant principal at Manchester Valley High School. These folks have been serving in their roles all year. We're very excited to have them sort of permanently labeled into those positions. And so I'm happy to bring those recommendations to you this evening.
Board members, any questions about this?
I, Mary was my student teacher, and she did a great job then. And I know she's doing a great job as assistant principal. And Heather Seemis, I see her, saw her on many occasions, because she was, I'm the ambassador to ManVal, and she was really a very positive part of ManVal now. She really is. And that's, she's a great addition.
Ms. Herbert, I absolutely agree. She is amazing. I've had many conversations with her, even when she was at Winters Mill, and she brings a lot to the table to ManVal. So I'm very excited for her to be there.
Yeah. Great addition.
Okay, Board members, if we don't have any other comments, we can call for the vote on the approval of appointments as submitted. So all those in favor, can I get a verbal aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. So congratulations to Ms. Rivera and Ms. Seemis. Okay, Board members, can I get a motion for the approval of personnel action items?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bataglia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, Board members, in the agenda pack this evening for personnel action items, there's one new hire and three leaves of absence included in the personnel actions this month.
If Board members, any questions? No? Okay. Then I will call for the vote on the approval of personnel action items as submitted. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much. Board members, can I get a motion for the approval of the transfer of school bus contracts?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bataglia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard?
Thank you, Ms. Savigny. Board members, you know, from time to time, we have bus contractors who wish to transfer bus route contracts between themselves. Once they're reviewed and approved by staff, we bring them to you for your final approval. And tonight, we have brought those transfers for your approval on the agenda pack.
Board members, any questions on these transfers? Then I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 6E, can I get a motion for the approval of the Educational Facilities Master Plan?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bataglia. I'll second that. Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. All right, Dr. Lockard?
Thank you. Board members, we're returning the EFMP for your approval this evening, so that we'll be able to submit it to the state by July 1st, as required. Remember, we presented the EFMP to you in discussion in March and discussed all the revised sections. We held a virtual public hearing later in May, which all of you attended. Mr. [inaudible]. Mr. Kane presented an overview, read the comments that we received, now returns for your action. Mr. Kane and staff are available for questions or clarification you might have before approval of the Educational Facilities Master Plan this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lockard. And I know that the Freedom Redistricting Committee discussion has come up several times in the context of the EFMP. So we did hear, we had the public hearing about two weeks ago now to discuss this item, and we had two pieces of public comment. And we also had Commissioner Rothstein asking us to provide some information to the commissioners of the impact of the Freedom Redistricting Committee. And I do know that we provided that information to Commissioner Rothstein, and I was just hoping that maybe Mr. O'Neill could make some comments about that.
Sure. Sorry, let me turn on my video and mic. Following that discussion, we produced sort of a, I think it's called like a Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee status update, and we did provide a copy to Commissioner Rothstein so he would have it directly, you know, in his possession and be able to share it. He did, I think when Mr. Hartlove and I were at one of the commissioners' meetings, he did recognize that he had received that. We also went ahead and posted that on your board website for the Freedom Elementary Redistricting Committee area. So anyone who goes there to check on the process or the status will see that right away. And, you know, we talked about this in April and then again in May with you in these meetings, and it's at the point now where, you know, we missed the original timeline of having a report in June, and we're clinging to maybe we could get to the timelines found in policy and Reg JCAA for a September report and then the public process. But at this point, it's nearing a place where I don't foresee that being possible. And so the document that you're referring to, Ms. Savigny, also discusses what that means for the school headed into the next year as well. That enrollment would be, well, we'll wait and see what enrollment turns out to be in September, but assuming enrollment's the same, then sort of the staffing ratios stay the same, we'll still try to staff as best we can. There are some relocatable classrooms there to help alleviate some of the utilization above capacity. All those things remain in place until we can finish that process, and you could take whatever appropriate action you deem to take at that time as a board.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. And Board, I do know that we had two questions that were at the public hearing regarding the EFMP. I know one of them was regarding the gymnasiums and air conditioning those, and I just was curious to see if we had a response for. And we don't necessarily respond to public hearing comments at that time, but when we used to be able to have the public hearings with folks in attendance and they had specific questions, we did actually address a lot of those on the spot if there weren't too many questions at one time, right? So I was hoping that we maybe have an answer for those two questions that were asked at the EFMP.
Sure. I remember the one was about gymnasia being air-conditioned, I think specifically Liberty. Those are not projects that appear in your Educational Facilities Master Plan. Historically, we've tried to approach some air conditioning projects in different ways in certain places in historical contexts. We were able to use some performance contracting to do some air conditioning projects. In general, our overall strategy to get to air conditioning, gymnasium, I guess that's the plural, gymnasium, gymnasia, maybe that's not, going forward would be to use the infrastructure renewal account in your CIP, the account that we talk about from time to time, that you just took a budget action populate with some money from fund balance. So there's not a specific timeline, unless Ray wants to correct me, I'm not aware that we have a specific timeline with sort of schools lined up. It's just a matter of if we were at a place where that account is in a very healthy state and there's no other pressing need or something coming sort of to us that we weren't planning on, like the Westminster High facade, then we would begin to look at that project account to try to address air conditioning in some of the gyms. And hopefully, what I said is accurate, although I see Ray appearing, so maybe he's about to correct me.
No, I just don't, when you bring up the Westminster High facade, it's sort of like the kiss of death for any of our discussions. But there are five, actually, we have a number of locations. Liberty High has a main gym and the aux gym that aren't air-conditioned. South Carroll High, also main and aux. Francis Guy Key has an aux gym that's not air-conditioned. Northwest East, which hopefully, we're taking care of, and then Carrolltown Elementary. We are looking, we have, for the infrastructure renewal money, we were looking at ways to go about air conditioning those gyms. But, and then with the influx of funds that were just transferred to infrastructure renewal, we'll go back to that, having that discussion. Now, the reality is, these systems are very expensive, so we may have to make some compromises to, it may not be systems that if we could fully fund them, that we would put in, but it may provide the air conditioning necessary to get through some of the tougher competitions where the seats are filled and whatnot. So we have them on our list. It is a matter of getting to them, prioritizing and getting to them, and finding those funds, scrounging about for those funds to fund those projects.
So I feel like Ray might have agreed with me, which makes me feel good this evening. And so those wouldn't necessarily appear in the Educational Facilities Master Plan, but they would be projects we would bring to you for approval, then they would then appear on your monthly construction report as they move forward. So that's how they'd be tackled.
Okay. And Ms. Bataglia, I know you had some comments that you wanted to make. Oh, I think you're muted.
Sorry, my child was playing drums. I was looking over regarding the capacities at some of the schools, which was like Runnymede, Ed Valley. I definitely wanted us to look into creating, you know, just like we have with Freedom, like, you know, just creating the group of people to come together and start looking into that. I don't want us to wait until it might be a little too late. I think we need to look at it now regarding the capacity issues.
And Ms. Bataglia, you're speaking specifically to the Ed Valley and Runnymede situation?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And I know that we had several of those discussions when we were looking at the enrollment projections back in January, and then Mr. Kane was able to provide some revised sensitivity tests using different potential net migration into the county numbers in those projections. And so with those sensitivity tests, we had seen that those two schools that were getting into the red several years out fell back to yellows, right, in terms of, you know, being below, I think, 107% is our, Mr. Kane, is it 107% that is our threshold for inadequate?
It's 105% for elementary schools. Anything over 105%, which at a typical elementary school, that's the, I would say it's roughly about 30 kids over capacity. So about a class over, you know, a little over a class. So, you know, 30 kids divided by six grades, it's, you know, a couple of kids in a grade. But that's the Board of Education's threshold that they've set in their policy. Obviously, the county has their own threshold for the adequate public facilities ordinance.
And we do know that we're taking action with the Freedom Area Redistricting Committee because of the situation at Freedom and potentially Carrolltown Elementary as well. Board members' thoughts on, I know we need to get through that process because that has already breached the thresholds where we need to take a look at it. The other schools haven't necessarily breached those thresholds yet, but it's potential that they may. So if we want to take a look at, I think that we probably need to keep a close eye on them as we look at the enrollment projections or the enrollment numbers next January, certainly.
I'd rather us, you know, try to be proactive with it than waiting until, you know, oh, now we might have a problem next year or the year after. I don't want us to keep putting things off, you know, I'd just rather us start moving ahead with it. I think that's the better thing to do, and I think that's what's fair, especially for those communities.
Okay. And I guess I have some thoughts around, I think it's definitely important to be cognizant of those potential issues. As I'm looking at the numbers right now, both of those schools that you're referring to are under 100% utilization, but are projected to potentially start creeping up to those thresholds in future years. So I would, my personal opinion, before we would take a vote on something, would be that we just keep, we continue to keep an eye on those, be very aware of the situation, but there's not, it's not a situation where action needs to be taken yet. And I think it would just make sure that we look at the enrollment projections in January of next school year to see if our opinion of that changes. And that would be my personal opinion, if folks want to discuss that for their thoughts.
Yeah, John, I agree on that. And in the back of my mind, I am very worried about enrollment in the fall with this pandemic. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm a realist, and I am concerned about if we don't open up, I think people might go elsewhere. And I really do worry about that. So I think that's a good idea to just wait, and I think we really need to see what our numbers are in the fall because we are in a place of unknown.
I would agree with Ms. Herbert. I think, Ms. Bataglia, I appreciate you keeping those in priority focus for us, but I think we're talking about six months from now, roughly, getting school underway, seeing what happens enrollment-wise, and then January, you know, is right around the corner. We're not going to lose any ground at this point, so certainly, that could be a priority look for us in January when we have those numbers.
Yeah, and I think, like everybody's saying, we've got to keep them on the radar screen. I don't think I've been shy about it. Man Valley should have been looked at five years ago. But I think two things. One, Mrs. Herbert's comments, this fall will be interesting. But number two, I think how, we need to get through Freedom and see the reactions to that and the solutions to that before we start looking at something else. I think it's a pretty tough topic, and we need to finish one before we start the other. But I agree with you, Ms. Bataglia, we need to keep this on the radar screen.
So, Board members, any other questions or comments on the EFMP document as it currently stands?
I will say one thing. When they were talking about gyms, I will tell you, I taught in a gym that did not have air conditioning the whole time I taught. And let me tell you, it was pretty hot, and yes, I probably, you know, propped the door open because we couldn't, we would not have been able to exist, you know, on days when it was so hot you couldn't go out, but then you were stuck in a gym. And I get that when they're talking about air conditioning gyms because I did that for a long time, and it's tough. I will say that. And you've got to pick and choose, but that is tough.
And this does have all of the information in it that will then lead to our CIP development for the next five-year period, starting in, and, Mr. Kane, can you remind me what the timeframe is for the CIP? Do we approve that in October, November?
Yes, the CIP's presented to the board in September, and then it comes back in October for approval.
October for approval, okay. But at the moment, this has all the updated information on it, the projects that we're working on, the prioritization of all those projects that will directly feed into the CIP in that timeframe. Okay, Board members, anything else before we take a vote on the EFMP? No? Okay, then I will call for the vote on the Educational Facilities Master Plan as submitted. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
That passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And that will bring us now to item 6F. Do I have a motion for the approval of the construction contract for Carroll County Career and Technology Center project?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bataglia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. All right, Dr. Lockard.
All right, Board members, very pleased and extremely excited to bring to you this next action item, the award for the construction contract for the Career and Technology Center modernization. We've been working on this project from approval to design and now construction. That process led us to the point where we issued the RFP in March, review process ending to be ready for this meeting. And when you consider that timing, there was perhaps a little bit of anxiety, given all that's been going on in the world the last few months. The good news is that we have our construction project, and I want to thank you for your hard work throughout the process of approval, and certainly that of staff as well. Among other things, we worked together to ensure maximum participation from the state, and now we are very much reaping the benefits of that effort. I also want to acknowledge our architect, Mr. Hagan, our construction manager, Mr. Dickinson, for all they've done to bring this project forward and this contract award tonight. Given the importance of this project and the results of the RFP, I asked staff to pull this item out as its own action item. Given the current situation, there was not the opportunity for an additional meeting or work session to review this final step in moving the project to construction so that you can ask your final questions. However, given the importance, I know that each of you individually has taken time to meet with staff to review the contract thoroughly and ask the many questions you had and understand the final contract award and all the details that go in it. In particular, each of you had involved discussions with staff regarding the additive alternates for the project that were structured into the RFP. In light of your interest in understanding and pursuing as many of the additive alternates as possible, we were able to spend more time considering those ad-alts further and ways in which we may be able to incorporate some of them into the final contract by applying a relatively small amount of additional local funding to maximize all available state funding. For your review and for the public's information, we wanted to take a few minutes and review the process, the construction award, and then have a discussion with you about the additive alternates, and look to you for your decision in any additional direction in that area. So I'd ask Mr. Prokop to share some slides we created to walk through these items, and we'll certainly have that conversation and answer questions as well.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Dr. Lockard. I think Bob's going to put up the slides in a second, but yes, Board members, what we're looking for tonight is consideration of the guaranteed maximum price to include in the Gilbain contract. This project we've been talking about for, I've been talking about it in this system for over 20 years. It's one of the earliest projects I think I may have talked to some folks about when I first came onboard more than 20 years ago, but it's one of the ones that seems to have been hanging out there and not been addressed. So this is very exciting. This is as excited as you're going to see me. This is, Jim's probably standing on his head at home, but this is all great news. And for the kind of things that we've been going through as a system recently, it's nice to bring something forward that's real positive. But I would like to take a minute before we get into the slideshow to thank Jim Marx and Bill Kane for their efforts to bring the project to where it is. And also Ellen Becker, she's going to be the project manager in a way that planned into this, the process where of this, the process where we are right now is kind of the end of the beginning. The planning process is the beginning. Bill will start to have fewer sleepless nights, hopefully, but Ellen, Ellen's sleepless nights are going to include, increase greatly. But we're, you know, we're very happy to get this thing, get this thing moving, get this project moving. So I wanted to thank them first, but go ahead, Bob, you can move to the first slide. So the, thank you. So first and foremost, I think we just have to start with that, you know, we do have a project that's within the full construction budget. It's within the local budget, which was the line in the sand we had to attain. And it's also meets the educational specifications for the instructional programs. That's really the trifecta. I don't know how we get better than that. And that, again, that's due to the hard work of Jim, Ellen, Bill, and our partners, the, with Jonathan and Jeff Hagan, to get us there. Not an easy thing to do. Also, I do have to make sure, I give Bill another pat on the back because, you know, he was instrumental in making sure that the design, that we worked with the MSD and the IAC staff to be sure that our design was going in the direction of maximizing state participation. And it wasn't a theoretical exercise. This was a, you know, this was real life, that the bid market threw us a curve, the conditions that we bid in threw us a curve. But that cushion that was provided with that maximum, that state allocation, that state threshold, that allowed this project to move forward. So it can't be overstated how important that, that, that exercise was and that, that consideration as we went through the, through the, through the process, through the, through the design. A bit of background, because, you know, in our world, in the construction world, the terminology we use and the processes we, that we use for construction can sometimes, we forget that the world in general doesn't necessarily speak our language. And we have a new board member on, new student board member, so we'll provide a little background to help out with, with understanding what we're talking about here. So the construction method that we're using is called Construction Manager at Risk with a Guaranteed Maximum Price. And so what that means is a construction manager, it really is an extension of our own, of the owner. The CM acts as the owner throughout the process, designed, bid, the construction and the closeout. So it's, they represent us. And they do, they do that unlike a typical design, bid, build, where a general contractor is involved, they are us on the, on the site. So that's an important difference. And in this case, it's an at-risk situation, which is exactly as it sounds. The, the construction manager is assuming a lot of the risk that other construction methods leave at the owner's doorstep. So we're shifting that risk to the construction manager on a big complicated project, they're outfitted and put together in a way to make these things work and accept that risk. The guaranteed maximum price, it commits the construction manager to just what it says, a guaranteed maximum price to bring in the project on time and within that GMP. The guaranteed maximum price includes the bids, fees, insurance, contingencies, general conditions, all other costs associated with bringing the project in. So it really, it's really quite a bit of a lump sum figure that we're looking at there. So with that background, Bob, if you could switch the next slide, please. So the timeline, as you can see, we couldn't have picked a worse time to bid. And it was full of uncertainty, which is the word of the, I guess, the word of the, since March has been uncertainty. Now, you know, and we had quite a few things occur that, you know, we had to adjust to, that we had to make, make do with. For instance, the pre-bid, normally we would have pre-bid walkthroughs, especially with a major modernization project. We would make sure that the contractors got into the buildings and saw what they were getting into. In this case, the team was able to put together video packages to get to the contractors so they could virtually do it. It's not a substitute, but it, but it did help those contractors get a good feel for what was, what they were up against and what they could expect to see. So the conditions kind of forced us to do some shifting, but, you know, that's what the team does best. That's what a good team does best, is you create a plan and then you adjust to the conditions on the ground. So, so the, let's see, we're, for the, for the, for the bids, Bob, if you could go to the next slide. The, so the next phase after receiving the bids was to perform scope reviews. And, you know, the scope reviews are just to be sure that everything's included. And that took some time. I think it was probably still being done as of last night. It just takes an immense amount of time, but the low, three lower, lowest bidders were challenged with evaluating those bids, making sure that the, that everything was able to be included. We also, we also were looking at, of course, the various value engineering options. We were evaluating how those bids affected the project estimate line items. So the CM helps us to develop and issue those packages and then do those, do those as a review. You know, in this case, the GMP is based on a collection of 28 different bid packages that they will be responsible for. And of those bids received, the lowest were selected to make up the GMP. Again, the biggest takeaway from this slide, and as many times as I can say it, is we are under the local budget. And at this, at this point though, it does not include add alternates. We'll talk about those in a few minutes.
And Mr. Prokop, so you said that, you know, there were 28 different bid packages and you just said that we, so we selected low bidder on each one of the individual 28 packages?
Right. Now, the, yes, the, yeah. And the only qualification I'll make with that is there were three packages having to do with equipment and cleaning services for final cleaning of the project. Gilbain gave us a number that we agreed to and we accepted. The difficulty with the, what they, the hurdle they couldn't cross effectively in these conditions was they were having difficulty getting companies to be able to give us numbers, to give them numbers under the conditions. A lot of folks weren't working. It was difficult to get numbers for some, some of the equipment and things. However, we have a number that's established in the GMP. That number won't go up and it could possibly come down depending on when, when things get normal enough where we get those numbers. And that money, anything left over goes into the owner's contingency. So there's no, no, no value to them for that number to be higher. So there were three items of the 28. The rest of them had multiple bidders for the most part. There were a handful that had a single bidder. But again, under, with, it's not just under these conditions, but the reality is when we do large projects like this, there are times where we have a single bidder. But for the most, but, but yes, to answer your question, yes, the lowest bidder, when we had the bids, was, that's what was selected.
And I was right there with you with, you know, the timing of this award of bids going out certainly probably was very nerve-wracking. You know, I think everybody was a little, little worried about the timing of this with the pandemic and everything going on. So I'm very glad that we have a project and this has worked out really well. Although I'm curious, just to ask the question, on the, on the previous slide, you said that the lowest bid exceeded the estimates, the previous estimates. And I'm curious if that was what we expected. So, I mean, at the same time, if there's a lot of uncertainty going on, I would also have expected a lot of construction companies to be looking for work or hungry for work. And with fuel costs being lower, you know, at an all-time low and different things like that, if that was necessarily what we expected, that each one of the individual bids to be higher than the estimates at that, of the original estimates?
Well, actually, it's, it was the cumulative total that was higher. So the individual, there were quite a few, they were under on, on target. We had a surprise with the mechanical, electrical, or I believe it was just the mechanical side. That one was a bit of a shock. Now, you know, the feedback we're getting from contractors out there and some of our counterparts, other counties, school system, with the, other school systems that are doing, doing major projects currently, what they're seeing is real impact to the contractors, somewhere in the neighborhood of 15% to 20% productivity reductions. That's the kind of thing that would have a contractor very concerned, that would they have to add more people, would they have to work additional hours? The impact to, so what the, what those contractors actually see, what they're feeling and how that affects their bid, very hard to, to determine based on a couple of, a couple of points. Also, you know, fuel prices fluctuate. So, you know, it, it could play a part. It's also something, you know, one of the big difficulties of this project, as we've discussed, it's a four-year project. Whoever is getting into this, whatever contracting firm's getting into this, is getting in for the long, long haul. And there's a lot of speculation they have to do when they come to, when they, you know, put that final number on their bid tab and they submit it to us, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of considerations that they have to make before they make that commitment. So it's hard to find any one thing that I would say influenced what's going on out there. And also, you know, typically the construction world sort of lags the rest of the economy. So while, you know, because money, capital money tends to get put in place and the, you know, and then that's spent, it takes years before that, before the capital side a lot of times will hit that same economic issue that maybe, you know, other, other industries are hit with immediately. So it's, it's a tough one to say. As I said, you know, earlier, we were surprised by a couple of packages. There are many other packages that were at budget or low, lower than the estimate. But, you know, so, so how much everything played into it? It's something we, we spend a lot of time speculating, but it's hard to get a for-sure answer.
Okay, no, that, that helps on, helped me understand it. You know, and the fact that, you know, in grand total, we're at a good place, but there was a lot of fluctuation between the 28 different packages.
Yes. That's, and again, that's not unusual. You know, we've, we've gone through cycles before where different commodities or different contracting sectors were experiencing either fluctuations in pricing or manpower shortages. And those just skew everything right off of the, right off of the charts. So, you know, we, I think we did very well, given the, given the circumstances. And yes, it was higher, yes, we were a bit surprised. And yes, and as I'm going to go through, a lot of work was done to get us to where we got, we are. It was, it was not a slam dunk on bid day, but certainly, you know, the work was done and that's how we get to, get to this point.
And I'm glad you mentioned the four-year project also because, again, contractors don't like unknowns. And when you're going through something like this, it's, it's always hard to predict in the next couple of years, but when you're going through something like this, it's, you know, it's real hard to predict. So I think, and you're going to get into the value engineering, but, but because of this system, you were able to get it back down some. But I think a lot of it, Ms. Sevigny, is the four years and, and the stuff we're going through right now with, you know, what, what are wages going to be two years from now? You know, it's, it's a lot of unknowns. So, and it's interesting that it was mechanical because it's also different, different industries have different inflation stuff, you know?
Sure, sure, yeah. And I would remind the board that if you recall, when we first started talking about from a schematic standpoint, what this project could be, we started out with a seven-year project. So I think some good decisions were made to go in the direction of reducing that timeline.
Yeah, I think even statements were made that some folks might quit if it actually ended up being a seven-year project.
I don't, I can attest to that. Okay, Bob, if you could go to the next slide? So as, as Mr. Kyler just mentioned, so after those bids are brought in, that's really the start of that, that intensive work process. And from Gilbain's standpoint and from our own staff, our staff was involved in the scope reviews. They are invited to the table, we, they participated. And through those scope reviews, value engineering suggestions were developed. We, we as a, as a team selected $856,000 worth of value engineering recommendations. Those weren't the only ones, but they were the ones that we selected. We felt that they were, they wouldn't impact the lifecycle of the building, which is important for value engineering decisions. We're not trying to cheapen the buildings. We need to make sure that what the selections we make are still of value for the long term. And they don't, more importantly, they don't affect the instructional program. These are things that wouldn't be noticed by the building occupants whatsoever. And there was a handout provided to the board if there were any questions about the specifics of what some of those were.
Mr. Prokop, just from my own education on this item, so the, the value engineering items, those are basically minor, or I guess they're not necessarily minor, but they're deviations from the original specifications. And so do those deviations need to be approved by the architectural firm or how, what is the process for that?
Yes, it's a team process. We all get together, sometimes we battle a little bit over the table because we all have areas that we think are more important than others. But the reality, but, but between the, the construction manager, the AE, architectural engineering firm, and also us, CCPS staff, we come to an agreement, we come to an agreement. That's why I say that not everything that was recommended was, was accepted. There are things that we wouldn't accept that would, that could affect the maintainability of the building, for instance, or, or the operation. There are places we won't go, we won't go, you know, that's, it's a bridge, that are a bridge too far. But the architects and engineers also weigh in. They tell us whether a decision would be detrimental to the lifecycle or would be somehow out of the norm or whatever. So yes, they're, they're suggested, they're, they're, they're vetted and before any decisions are made.
Okay, so it's essentially like a waiver that, that is granted by the architectural group, basically saying that this doesn't have a, that this is acceptable within the context of a larger project?
Yeah, I wouldn't, a waiver sounds like we're accepting some risk. I would just say that what it is, is they're saying, you know, you could do either or and be fine.
Okay.
You know, that, that's more really what they're saying, that you're not really, there's no risk to doing it this way. It's a different way to do it. But there, and the constructions like that. I mean, you know, there's so many aspects of buildings that those kinds of conversations and decisions can be made. Okay, all right, Bob? Thank you. So when we, earlier, one of the earlier slides, we mentioned the project line items. And that refers back to the estimates. And you recall that, you know, as we went through the process of schematic documents, design development documents, construction documents, each, each stage, we brought estimates as best we knew what they could be to the board. And those are going to evolve with each stage. As we know more and as we, as we understand more about the project, those are going to change. And then this final iteration, because of the work that the staff did with the furniture and equipment, for instance, we were able to reduce that line item because, because what we were able to do was take a larger portion of that furniture and equipment and move it into the contract, the contracts, the bid contracts, so that, that way they would be eligible for state participation. And, and by doing that, Mr. Echols has availability for the opportunities for Perkins grant funding. And we were able to reduce that line item by that, by $500,000 without affecting the instructional program or impacting the, what we're going to be providing to the, in the way of furniture and equipment to the, to the building. And lastly, along those lines, our owner contingency, we reduced it by $100,000. Again, the same, along those same lines, we felt like that was a reasonable reduction based on the, based on, on the information we had about the project. So with those, between the value engineering and those changes to those, to those line items, we were able to get the project right where, where it sits now. And so that would bring us to the next slide, Bob, which would be the add alternates. So before we review these, the add alternates, we just want to make, make a couple of points that, that the add alternates are included in the bid, that were included in the bid packages. And we discussed that alternates, I think, from the design development document, design development stage on through. So, so we know what these are. These are alternates that don't These are, um, uh, alternates that don't hurt the project, but could be an enhancement to the project. Uh, they don't hurt the instructional program, but certainly can enhance it, uh, make improvements to it, things like that. So, uh, but the projects could go on without it. They're not included in the GMP as it's noted, uh, the GMP amount that's in the cover sheet. Um, uh, but to gain state participation, we would want to consider these now. Uh, if we wait and include them as a change order later, uh, we would be bearing those costs locally. Uh, so it would, it, uh, I don't want to tell you what to do, but it would be good to do it now. Uh, so the-
And that's, that's a huge item for consideration, right? Cause we haven't maxed out necessarily on the amount of money that the state would be willing to contribute to this project.
No, we're, we're, we're well under that and, uh, I'll hit that, uh, towards the end a little bit, but we're, yes, we're, we're under it far enough where, where we could, where we could add, uh, some of these to the, uh, to the GMP and, and gain that state participation.
And if I might, while Ray, Ray takes a sip, President Savigny, um, he, he'll go to the next couple of slides, which detail each of the adults. Um, and he was being careful, cause we never want to direct the board, but, but honestly, Dr. Lockard in his opening remarks, um, made mention how each of the five of you took some time out and, and met, um, virtually, but also received paper and reviewed, you know, reviewed the project thoroughly with staff. And, and so we're not in any way trying to direct, but it was through those conversations and in particular with Mr. Kyler, cause Mr. Kyler would just call you up and tell you what he's thinking. And I like that about him. Um, it, it, it made us understand that you might have more interest in these ad alternates. Uh, you might have real interest in these ad alternates rather than us just saying, you might want to think about these things. And that compelled us to look at, um, okay, if there's real board interest in pursuing some of these, you know, what are some ways in which we can help you get there financially, uh, at the, at the smallest amount of local cost? So, um, in no way is this meant to say you, you must do these things or you should do these things. It was sort of based on your discussions and your comments that, that helped us go further down this road. And so we're very appreciative of the time you, you each took to come in and re, review this whole process of the, the GMP so thoroughly. So as we talk about these things, we're, we're really building on those conversations you had individually with us.
And thanks for that, John. I, I, I think that, um, that this process has played out really well. And I think that, you know, that the individual conversations that I've had with the other board members, I would certainly agree with that, that we're looking to, um, if there are still state dollars to be had for this project, and if by choosing these ad alternates now allows us to get the 60% state participation, then that is clearly something that we're, that we're interested in, in looking at. So we, that's something that we would need to pick which ad alternates we want to do now, correct?
Correct.
And make them part of the project and get the 60% state participation, um, in those pieces.
Correct. And maybe Bob can advance and then Ray can go through them. But to that point, President Savigny, when we talked to each of you, we, we realized there was some real interest and that we should try to figure out the, the most local, cost-effective way to do that. And, um, those conversations prompted, uh, Ray and, and, and all of the staff, especially Bill, who, who he's already, um, given lots of, uh, credit to, to not just say, let's think about this, but to take the time out to have, uh, very specific meetings with the state staff, so that what we're about to go through with you now isn't a guess, it's a definitive. It's a, you know, we sat down and said, with what, with what's left at the state level to be maximized, which of these ad alts would you, would we be able to leverage the most participation in? And then it comes out to, and I know these are huge numbers for any one of us, but in the terms of, in terms of the size of this project, it comes out to, uh, you know, a relatively small percentage, local, um, local additional commitment. And, uh, and you were, you were clear with us and I think we were clear with you in conversations, we, we had to figure out a way to do that, that did not require asking, um, the commissioners for more new money for the board of ed. And so what Ray's going to go through ultimately as a possible solution is not asking the commissioners to allocate additional funds to Carroll County Public Schools. It's, it's applying those funds that have already been allocated to us differently to achieve that goal.
Right, because the, the GMP as it currently stands is just, is right at or just below the $34.1 million local commitment for this project, correct?
That's right. That's right. I would, I would, from our standpoint, given the percentages, it's, it's right on. Uh, it's, it's, it's such a, we're, we're right there. We're right there. So yeah, I, I'll go through these, hopefully, quickly. Um, so the, uh, the first two are, have to do with, uh, with, uh, with the, uh, and I don't see, I'm not starting out well, uh, but they have to do with the, the food service programs and with these, with these, uh, with the storage, uh, the storage room and the mobile refrigerator gives the capability for, uh, the career and tech to be its own entity and not have to share, uh, space, uh, with Westminster High School. They won't have to move things between the buildings. It'll be standalone and it would be an instructional advantage if they don't have to do things like that. Uh, that was recommended by Ms. Sarno. The, um, the next one is a geothermal well. And again, it's for an instructional, uh, it would be an instructional improvement from the current curriculum. This would allow the instructor to, to teach that as part of the curriculum, which is geothermal, uh, HVAC systems. Uh, the construction yard enclosure, uh, was brought up by Mr. Williams during our, uh, security reviews. Uh, what's in the, uh, base bid now is a chain link fence. It does have some slats to obscure some of the, um, some of what's inside the, um, the enclo, the, uh, the construction yards. Uh, but what's the, what the ad all provides is a, is a, is a real wall with, uh, securable egress. Uh, the concern is we, you know, students are using that space for instruction. They, they, you know, the, the idea being that they should be screened off from, from visibility. And it would be good, uh, also for protection of the materials that are there too, if folks don't know what's back there or within those walls. Uh, the next one, unfortunately, we do have to talk about, a little bit about Westminster High School, because, uh, unfortunately, the, um, uh, the brick, um, masonry at, uh, career and tech, similar vintage and similar, uh, designers, uh, we don't know the extent of the damage to the brick. We're, we're making some assumptions here. So what we did was, as part of the competitive, competitive process, was to include it in the masonry package. And what we've got then is the ability, if we need to pull the trigger and do that work, this is, the money's already there, state is participating, unlike what's happening at Westminster High School. Um, and the, but the reality is, we don't know whether the damage at career and tech is as extensive as Westminster High. So therefore, what we are going to do is probably take the first year or so and do destructive testing. And perhaps we won't even need to do as much as what we anticipated. This may come in lower, but we want to be prepared to do as much as necessary so that we walk away from this building. We're not, we're not trying to come back here in another two years, trying to fix something we should have addressed when we had the chance.
And Mr. Prokop, that, that's positive from two perspectives, right? Versus the, the Westminster High School situation where it's not an emergency situation, right?
Yes.
And then secondly, we get the state to actually participate in that piece.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. So then we have, uh, the next two are actually instructional, uh, instructional related, relatively small numbers, I know, but, uh, maker space and community use classroom spaces. Uh, Mr. Echols is probably, hopefully still hanging in there. And, and if anybody has questions about what those spaces would be used for, uh, he could, you know, he could perhaps talk to that. Um, if, uh, I'll move on and if there are questions, we can come back to those. Uh, Bob, if you could jump the slide, please? Thank you. And, um, so the last two are, uh, storage buildings. The last two that we're gonna, that we're gonna recommend are storage buildings, uh, that go inside that enclosed, uh, construction area that I had, that I had mentioned earlier. Um, and, and it's my fault for not pulling out of here that the buildings will be a student project. That was one of the discussions we were having as a possibility, if they didn't get approved. Um, but the reality is, the more we talked about it with the instructional folks, you know, it makes more sense to, to let the instructors create a, uh, you know, their instructional program around what the students are going to see out in the real world, not necessarily what a, what, what would be involved with building a storage building. So it, it just makes sense to, to include this, to give these, uh, to, it, it keeps materials and equipment out of the elements. For, for instance, just exceed, you know, extends the longevity of, of that, uh, of those things. So we feel like these would be, uh, you know, th- these would make sense to do. Um, put the, uh, I think, I think we put the, the last few, um, on here, just to show that we didn't just put ad alternates on, uh, so that we come running back and tell you we should add them to the project. We, we did quite a few, uh, quite a few, uh, changes, quite, quite a few ideas, and these are not recommended. We, we feel that the, the, we're not going to get the value out of them, that the cost is, uh, that they would cost. So just, that, those were just to show you, the, the electrical, uh, the conductor, the, the yard paving, uh, the, the yard is still paved, it's just not concrete. Uh, floor tile upgrade, um, lab floor upgrade. The, again, these would be nice, but they're not critical. Um, but I, I, I think the first nine that I described, uh, discussed would be, uh, real advantages to the building. Those would total, I know Jim is at home, uh, doing the actual calculations to the dollar, but that's about 1.8 million dollars. Uh, about 1.1 million from the state, 700,000 locally. And, uh, what John had mentioned is some of our conversations, you know, we do have at least, uh, a couple of projects in which we could ask, uh, you know, we, the, the board could ask the, the, the commissioners to, to transfer, uh, or, uh, to, to request a transfer from those projects to, uh, to, to the, to this project. So that's one alternative. It's a pretty straightforward way to go about it and the money does exist, uh, in a couple of our, uh, current capital projects. So that was the, that's really the end of the, the formal presentation. So, uh, we can, uh, we're ready to discuss or answer any questions you might have.
Ray, before we move off of some of these, um, ad alternates, I did have a question about, um, the, the two that were added, right? That we said, okay, we don't want them to be a student project. It makes more sense to, to, to do these as ad alternates, right? The three-bay storage building and the two-bay storage building. You're, you're actually recommending both of those. Are those-
That's right.
-for two very different purposes? So, so we actually would be adding five bays of storage?
Yes, there, there are two different, uh, for two different, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Instructional programs.
Programs, right?
Two different programs. Uh, off the top of my head, I believe one is masonry. I can't recall what the other one is. Um, but, but yes, it, they're, they're for two different programs.
And so the, the 1.8 or 1.9 million that all of these recommended ad alternates, we think that they're definitely a state money, um, for their 60% participation for those pieces.
Uh, yes, we're, our, our estimate at this point is, uh, the number will, will still be, uh, probably about another million dollars lower than the state maximum participation at this point. Right? Upon acceptance, if we accepted them all. So we're about 2.1 million lower at this point without the ad alternates on the state side.
And so what Ray's describing as a possibility here, if this is something, if you want to approve these nine ad alts as part of the GMP tonight, um, would be to transfer money that's already been allocated to the board of ed by the commissioners in the past. So that, that's money that's accounted for in, in your accounts and, uh, in their six-year plan. Um, and, um, I had, I have alerted Mr. Zaleski that this conversation would happen. That's not to say that, you know, I asked him to agree to it or anything like that, just gave him the courtesy of knowing it and that I was going to say that. And also these couple more things, um, you know, when, when Mr. Kyler kind of challenged us to look at this in different ways, um, one of the things I did was went back to the Mount Airy project, which, which really got underway, way right as I came to Carroll County. And, um, I had a memory that we approved, uh, that the board of ed approved some ad alternates at that time as well. And I pulled those records from, um, June 2011. And the way in which, uh, they were able to move forward was a, a CIP transfer across existing projects, which is similar to what we're proposing here. So there's some, some precedent for that on our last major, uh, full modernization project. And, and then also the commissioners have to approve that transfer and they did in, in this case. And then lastly, if you think back just to your budget approval, um, on the capital side, this is a process we do fairly regularly with the county staff anyway, and we had been through this process, cleaning up a lot of, of project accounts that were, you know, ready to be closed. And then Mr. Zaleski was able to transfer, um, those allocations into the career and tech project. So it, 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 it helps the county help us too, uh, by going through that process, because as I said, it's not additional allocation, it's not new funding. Um, and so really what we're describing is basically the same thing again, to find that amount of, of needed local money in existing CIP projects and then bring to you a transfer next month for your action that would, you know, make, make the GMP with these included whole at that point.
And again, John, that, that was an $800,000 local commitment estimate?
I will ask Mr. Prokop for a more precise number. I know it's seven to eight somewhere.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's around us. I, I had calculated a quick thumbnail, 700. We would, uh, you know, we, Jim is, should be totaled up, uh, I would assume at this point. So we should be ready if, uh, to, to, uh, to know what the total GMP would be.
Mr. Marks, are you sitting out there with the total?
I have it right here. If you guys can hear me, I'm, uh, if we accept those alternates, we're looking at, uh, a GMP of 68,228,000 and $493.
And what would the CIP transfer need to be, Jim?
Just over 700,000. It comes to about 706,000 right now.
Thanks.
706,000, okay. So board members, do, do we want to have a quick discussion about that? And then we can also, um, I think it makes sense to ask Commissioner Frazier about his, um, perspective from the commissioners as well. Board members, are, are we all interested in, and I think individually, we all expressed interest in, in moving in this direction, but now that we're together as a group, I think we have to have, I think we have to have this discussion very specifically.
Yeah, I, I feel pretty strongly that, um, once they've verified that there's more state money available, if we can end up doing this career and tech at 68 million without asking the commissioners for one more dollar and only doing CIP transfers. And I think, I think originally, um, uh, Mr. Prokop, you said, the state has more money available than this and there is more CIP money available than this, but you guys, the, the alternates you've recommended are all you want to recommend. You're, you're happy with the total we're at, correct?
Uh, yeah, yes, yes. Uh, we're, the, uh, as I said, you know, the other, um, the others, they just didn't feel like they were, were getting the value for the cost. I, I guess that's the way I would describe it. If, uh, you know, there are certain things that would be nice, but you know, it doesn't, they're, they're not things that necessarily are going to impact, uh, the operation of the school in any significant way.
Well, to me, it sounds like it's a win-win for us, because certainly by coming in, um, just under local funding, we wouldn't be asking the commissioners for any additional money. We'd only be asking for this transfer of the 700, 800,000 dollars, um, from, um, some of the other projects. Um, again, I think that's a win. And again, with maximizing the state dollars is also, um, very important that we get as much as we possibly can from the state. So I'm certainly all for this and I'm just so elated that it's all coming together for us like this.
Great. Marsha and Tyra, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
I am good to go. I have been waiting for this project for a long time and I remember when it opened and I am ready to get a hard hat and a shovel on and do these non-alternates. There we go. And a groundbreaking.
I'm with Marsha. Where's my shovel? I'm ready.
Absolutely.
I'll bring one. I'll, I'll bring one with me. Let's go. Can we start tomorrow? Like, I'll, I'll go ask for a shovel.
It's, it's going to feel like tomorrow for, cause everybody's going to have to mobilize pretty quick. But, uh, uh, we're, yeah, we're, we're going to have to come up with a, um, some sort of groundbreaking ceremony. I don't know what that's going to look like in the current situation. Um, and also given the fact that we're probably going to want to get underway, uh, I think Mr. Marks has them gotten out there. gotten out there in just a week or so. So, we'll develop something to commemorate the start.
I think we definitely need to do that. Whatever we need to do to make a groundbreaking ceremony happen, I think that this is, this is a big deal, and I would definitely like to commemorate that. And I, board members, I think it sounds like we all agree on that.
Everybody bring your own shovel, whether it's a tiny little garden or...
No, 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 we'll get you a shovel. We have shovels. We have shovels, don't worry.
I love them both, but if I were you folks, I would appoint Jim Marks as the party planner and not the...
Date and time, I'm ready, come on.
Thank you all very much.
Once again, I agree with John.
Nice. Now, I have to ask, Commissioner Fraser, are you as excited as we are?
Uh-oh, did we lose Commissioner Fraser? Or is he not excited?
I know there's a storm going through Westminster, so it is quite possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Yep, I got a storm at the farm.
Okay. I mean, I would be surprised if the commissioners didn't agree that this was a good way to go, especially since we're not requesting any additional money from them. You know, we're sticking to the 34.1 million dollars that was committed to on their end in the CIP. And if this can, and I appreciate, I really appreciate the efforts of staff to figure out a creative way to do this. I think it's just outstanding work all the way around, and I think we definitely need to ask the question of the commissioners quickly, just to make sure that there aren't any dissenting opinions, but I think that this makes ultimate sense to move forward in this fashion. Ray, I did just have one real quick additional question on the three bay storage and the two bay storage buildings in the ad alternates. It said for those two, that the building will be a student project. I think, didn't we say that those wouldn't be student projects?
Yeah, as I think I mentioned, I neglected to pull that statement, that sentence out of each one of those. As I was reworking it, I neglected to do that, so that's, I knew that would cause some confusion.
Okay, okay. So, I think if we can just make the, if we can strike those from the descriptions of the ad alternates.
I was actually excited about that.
And Mr. Echols, I think, I think you commented before, if they couldn't have happened, they possibly could have been student projects to ever get done, but you weren't really in favor of that, correct?
Correct. So, what it's actually saying there is that the base bid would be the concrete pad would be put down, and the building then would become a student project. However, that means we're designing student instruction to meet a facility need, rather than designing the facility to meet a student instructional need. So, we would prefer to design student projects based on what they need to learn, rather than to have them, you know, finish out the facility. So, while we could, ideally, we'd be designing the instruction directly for the students and not to solve another problem.
Right, and Mr. Pataglia, I will say that initially, I was in agreement with you. I was thinking, oh, that was, that's pretty cool, that it could be a student project. But then, when Mr. Echols gave that description, I was like, oh, okay, that makes, that makes perfect sense.
Don't worry, we'll build something else.
Okay.
And Mr. Prokop, these ad alternates were not part of the original spec documents to be part, one of the 28 bid packages, right? For the estimates that were being done for the overall project?
They were included in the bid packages, yes, but separable. They were designed, yes, designed so they could be isolated, and those prices just reflect those things.
Right.
If I could add one more thing, I don't know if John may have mentioned it before, I apologize if he did, but he's talking about this with the state, but the state does not participate in change orders later. That's why it's important, if we decide this, we need to do it now to get our participation, or else we lose it. Sorry, I don't know if you heard me, I have a thunderstorm out here too.
Okay, no, we heard you.
I think that's a good point, because my initial reaction, looking at the brickwork, well, maybe you should test for two years, maybe you should figure out how to do it more cheaply, but then when I found out you could get 60% of it from the state, well, you decide now, and if it's cheaper, that's still good for both sides, but that's why you decide now instead of wait for the testing, correct?
That's right.
And that was absolutely the clincher for me, when I realized that there were still more state dollars to be had, and that you have to put these as part of the project upfront in order to get the state participation. It just makes sense. So, I appreciate the creativity and the critical thinking on staff's part to make this all happen right now.
Great.
So, board members, it sounds like we are all in agreement about the ad alternates, so let's just be very specific about what we are voting on then. So, board members, I guess I should say, are there any other questions or comments that board members want to make before we do a motion and a vote? No? Okay. Then, let's be very specific about the motion for the ad alternates. So, we would like to, as a board, approve the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, the first nine ad alternates as laid out in the presentation, with the one modification that the last two items will not say building will be a student project, we'll strike those statements. So, we are looking to approve the GMP with the motion to include the first nine ad alternates. Board members, if you're in agreement, I need someone to make that motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
One of you Westminster ladies needs to second.
I will second that. Seconded by Dr. Dorsey, okay. So, and we will have some follow-up where we need to get Commissioner feedback on the transfer, the CIP transfer that we'd be talking about. Any additional comments or...
Mr. O'Neil, you're comfortable that what we're doing has precedence and that shouldn't, that's not a real risk getting that, correct?
I would like to think so. It has precedent both in terms of the last major modernization project, but also it's what both you and the commissioners just did at the close of this fiscal year. It's a relatively common process to clean up capital accounts when you can. It's beneficial to them, because that's money they can reallocate locally without, you know, without having to find new money for, one way or the other, that's a savings for them. If that money's cleaned here and applied here for this value, then that's, you know, that's how 706,000 dollars less they need to come up with somewhere anyway. So, I, I mean, that's how I would do it. I guess we'll find out when we take the budget transfer, but...
And, and board members, I would assume that the, that you would need this number, the number that's on the cover sheet, as the GMP would have to be revised, kind of like what you would do when you do with the, for the budget, for the operating budget. Mr. Hartlove tallies the number, and the number is agreed to, that was what Mr. Marks just raised, as a 68 million, 228,493 dollars as the new GMP. That would be, that's the number that would be voted on.
Okay, so, the cover page where it currently says 66,268,791, we need to amend that number to be 68 million, 228,493.
Correct.
Right, okay. And I would also state, just for the record, that that sentence that says the construction management fee was previously approved by the Board of Education on June 12th, that should say 2019, I believe, not 2020.
Oh, yeah.
We're not at June 12th, 2020 yet.
No. We do a lot of stuff, but we can't shift stop time.
My fault.
I know, sometimes it feels like we're light years later than it is right now, actually, with everything we've been going through. Okay, so, board members, any other comments or questions? And with those modifications, I will call for the vote on the approval of the Career and Technology Project as amended. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, so that passes unanimously, and Mr. Marks, we will be awaiting the party news.
We're working on it right now.
Thank you, thank you, thank you to the staff.
Thank you to the team. Thank you to the people who made this happen.
Yes, thank you all, board members. This is terrific. Thank you.
We have a project that our students are going to benefit from for decades, so we're really appreciative of the collaborative effort here. Nice work.
Very exciting times. Thank you, everyone. Okay, then, we will move on to item 6G. Board members, I need a motion for the approval of the 2020-2021 pay scales and pay rates for contingent employment.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia. Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, we're in the home stretch. Usually, at the June meeting, we bring you the pay scales for contingent employees for the next fiscal year. These rates of pay vary across different categories. The professional hourly rate is indexed to the beginning of the salary scale in the CCEA master agreement. I'm recommending a 2% increase on the technical and substitute teacher rates. For the other hourly rates, we are continuing our phase-in plan to be ahead of the Maryland minimum wage law, and these increases, for your information, are already accounted for in our FY '21 budget.
Board members, any questions or comments on this? No, not hearing any? Then, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, and item 6H. Board members, I need a motion for the approval of the 2020-2021 non-union affiliated employee salary scales.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by, was that Mr. Kyler?
Yes.
Okay.
Almost made it.
Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, again, we bring this typically in June. We do have a group of employees who are not associated with a union, and for their salary scales, I'm recommending a 2% increase for FY '21. And again, these increases are also accounted for in our FY '21 budget.
Board members, any comments or questions? Okay, then, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item 6I. Board members, I need a motion for the approval of additional legal fees.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, board members, at the close of every fiscal year, we reconcile all of our invoices with Pessin-Cat's law and determine our legal fees for the year over our retainer. We have finished that reconciliation, and I'm bringing for your action the approval of the additional legal fees for FY '20, which are outlined right there on the agenda cover sheet.
Board members, questions? Dr. Lockard, could you just make a comment as to how these fees for this year compare to other years for the additional legal fees?
Sure. John, I think we looked at this.
Very consistent. The, I took a three-year average, because there was a one year of a lot of appeals where legal fees were really, really high, and I didn't want that to skew things, so I took that year out and took a three-year average. The three-year average of fees over retainers has been 113, so this is 113,000 dollars. So, this is right in line with, a little bit below that average. We've had a year that was lower and a couple years that were higher, but it's very, very consistent.
Board members, any other comments about this? Then, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, board members, moving on to item 6J. I need a motion for the approval to retain legal counsel.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Dr. Lockard?
Okay, along the same lines, it's time to renew our contract for legal services for FY '21. Again, I'm recommending that we retain Pessin-Cat's law for our legal counsel. Ms. Eisenberg and Mr. O'Malley and their, and their teams continue to provide us excellent service for all our many and varied legal needs, and we're very much appreciative of their ongoing support. They really are a part of the Carroll County Public Schools team here, so we thank them. The agreement for FY '21 contains no changes from last year's agreement, and it's included there on the cover sheet.
And Dr. Lockard, I would like to echo those comments. The support and services that are provided by Ed O'Malley and Rochelle Eisenberg, I can't thank you guys enough for the support that you do provide us. We've reached out to you on a multitude of questions and issues, and I just want to thank you for your professionalism at all times and guidance on legal matters. So, it's really a great relationship, and I'm looking forward to continuing that into the future.
And I'd like to echo that, and both of them seem to be able to very tactfully look at me and say, you probably shouldn't do that. Thank you.
Board members, any other comments or questions?
They're fantastic. They do a great job, and I wouldn't want anybody else to work with.
Then, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And that passes unanimously. And Rochelle, would you, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, I would. Thank you. On behalf of Ed O'Malley and Pessin-Cat's law, I really do thank you for your continued confidence in our work. Ms. Sivigni, I appreciated your earlier comments this evening on the detailed explanation provided to the board by my colleague Ed O'Malley on a very technical contract. I think you called it beating up on him. And I think you realize that we definitely do our homework. I must say, this has been one of our most challenging years working for the board due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We've been addressing novel questions on the novel virus, and we know that this is unfortunately going to continue as the schools reopen, but we like the challenge. It's actually fun for us, maybe not for you, but it's interesting work, and we look forward to helping you resolve these questions, many of which are very serious and difficult. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eisenberg. Okay, and then, we have one last item, 6K. Board members, I need a motion for the approval of textbooks and instructional materials for 2020-2021.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Dorsey.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard?
Yes, board members, you're getting, you're getting a list of materials that staff wants to bring, because they're necessary to start school for certain courses in the fall, and I think Jason will tell you that they're going to come back around a little bit later after school starts with another list of instructional materials. So, Mr. Anderson, did I catch it correctly?
That's accurate. As I shared, or as Ms. McCollson shared earlier, because of the pandemic, we were able to get through certain portions. Dr. Dorsey, I believe you served on that as well, and there still needs to be some additional time, please, to go through additional resources, ancillary resources, and other resources that we really do feel that we need to spend more time and provide more time for the council members to go ahead and review. But at this time, we are bringing materials that would be in the best interest of us having approved before the start of the school year. We have some exciting new coursework that's going to be available, and any specific questions in regards to that, Ms. McCollson's still on the call. that, Ms. McCollum's still on the call as well.
And I'm just wondering, oh, I'm just looking at like the first item, that fifth edition of the building YABR programs. Again, are we already using the fourth edition or an earlier edition anyway, or?
Well, so prior to this coming school year, we taught computer science only at the Career Technology Center, the PLTW Computer Science Program. That program is shifting to another section, Cybersecurity Cisco. We're going to have two different Cisco programs at the Tech Center. And we're embedding computer science now in all comprehensive high schools as a CTE program study.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. And, and Ms. McCollum, I just want to thank you. I think you had answered all of the questions that I had on these items when we were having the discussion earlier about the curriculum council. So thank you for that. Board members, any other questions? So we'll be approving these items tonight. And then sometime in the near future, in the September to October timeframe, we'll be looking to approve additional materials for the school year.
That's correct. We anticipate having the opportunity by the month of September to have folks have the time they need. We're hopeful, having the time they need to go ahead and review those materials. And then we'd probably like to bring those additional pieces back to you perhaps in October at the latest.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, board members, any other questions? Okay. Then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And that ends the action items for tonight. We don't have any items under Section 7 up for discussion this evening. So that takes us to unfinished business and new business. Board members, did anyone have anything that they wanted to bring up before we announce upcoming meetings?
Just have a wonderful summer, kids. Feels like we've been on break since March 13th. But I'm just glad that, you know, it's summer and this is something new for everybody.
Doesn't feel like I've been on break since March.
I'm sure. The kids, maybe.
Well, I was going to say, now, I know Marcia has shared that she has been working with her grandchildren. I too have been working with a grandson ever since we picked up with Discovery Learning. And I didn't mean to say Discovery Distance Learning. But anyway, when his last day came last Friday, we were so excited. And we got up on Monday morning and we wondered what would our new schedule be? Because it seemed like we needed to be sitting and working starting at 8:30. So anyway, I know it's been a long haul for, for all of the students and the staff members. So I think everybody needs a break and hopefully everyone will stay well and we can return to school in the fall.
Dr. Dorsey, I think you actually said it right. It was a discovery because we all had to...
And we discovered a lot, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. We had to learn and navigate. And, you know, it was a learning experience, you know, and something that we had to discover how to, to figure out, I guess. So, but, yeah, I'm just excited for, get to the end and see what we can do in the fall.
I don't want to say anything, but I'm still, I would love to hear how, how you think of your first meeting.
Well, it was definitely a learning experience. So, thank you all of you.
Well, again, we're really excited to have you. And so it definitely, the first couple of meetings are a learning experience for all of us when we first get on the board. So I think we can all attest to that. But we're, we're looking forward to, you know, we appreciate your comments earlier tonight and we look forward to very active engagement with you as well on future board meetings. So thanks for being here tonight. And I do want to say congratulations to all the graduating seniors one last time. We're so excited for you and proud of you. And, you know, good luck on your, your new journey in the fall, whatever that may be. And congratulations and good luck to all of our students for tomorrow being the last day. I know I will be very excited to not have to get up in the morning and, and nag my kids, did you do your work? Did you do your work?
And I think, you know, we should acknowledge as well the students who are moving to the next level. By now, I'd be bidding my fifth graders farewell. And of course, the eighth graders are being bid farewell as they're entering high school. And I know that staff members in those receiving schools have been trying to provide an acclamation to the new setting by way of technology. So again, we appreciate all their efforts and hopefully the students and families have found those to be very helpful.
Yes, definitely. Thank you all the staff for hanging in there during this time. Definitely.
Okay. Any other new or unfinished business, folks? Okay. Then with that, I will say that at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, June 24th, 2020, we have a board updates meeting and that will be conducted virtually. At 5:00 PM on Wednesday, July 8th, 2020, we have our next board meeting. And that may be virtual and we will update the public as necessary. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Harvard.
I will second that.
Seconded by Dr. Dorsey. And all those in favor, can I get a verbal aye, please?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful rest of the week. And we'll see you on June 24th.
Happy Father's Day.